Do you want two minutes?
Yeah, I'm just gonna go down and grab it.
Okay, yeah.
If anybody goes up this back door, we locked it.
Does anybody want an agenda? Code of the Agenda, do you want one?
No.
Okay.
So if we close up shop for the morning?
We'll be back in today.
You did?
Yeah. We'll close, uh, I actually open them last Thursday and Friday.
Okay.
But class doesn't start? Oh, yeah. Well, my name is Richard.
Did you get a chit chat? Do you run a bronx?
No, I went down and grabbed my agenda.
All right, we'd like to welcome you to the Town of Gilbert Planning Commission meeting this January 2nd, 2013. With that, can I get a roll call, please?
Chairman Jennifer Whitman.
Here.
Vice Chairman Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Bianchi.
Here.
Commissioner Chad Fuller.
Here.
Commissioner Joshua Ailer.
Here.
Commissioner Christopher Sipple.
Here.
Commissioner Bob Steiger.
Here.
Commissioner Kyle Powell.
We have a full house today. We'd like to welcome our newest member, Kyle Powell, as our alternate here on the Planning Commission. This is your first evening here, so welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
With that, we'll go ahead and approve the Agenda. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Number Six, Communications from Citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters that are not on the Agenda. The Commission's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future Agenda. Is there anybody here wishing to speak under those pretenses? I don't see anybody. All right, moving on, Public Hearing Consent. Consent Public Hearing Items will be heard at one public hearing. After the consent public hearing, these items may be approved by a single motion. At the request of a member of the Commission or staff, an item may be moved from consent calendar and may be heard and acted upon separately. Other items on the Agenda may be added to the consent public hearing and approved under a single motion. We have one of those cases on, under this consent public hearing. It's UP 1209, a conditional use permit for approximately 0.02 acres of real property located south of the southeast corner of San Tan 202 freeway and Williamsfield Road, adjacent to the freeway sound wall to permit a wireless communication facility, 70-foot high monopalm, in the Public Facilities Institutional Zoning District. Do we have anybody here wishing to speak on this item? We have quite a few cards, I think, that we're still going through, but I think they're for a different Agenda Item number. Okay, with that, do Commissioners have any comments or questions for staff? No? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the dais. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent items.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bianchi, a second by Commissioner Sipple. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on to Public Hearing Non-Consent. The non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the Commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the Commission. And with that, I just wanna, I think we've got quite a few people here tonight. Most of you may know kind of the process, but we wanted to give you a little overview of what you can expect tonight. We introduce the case and bring up the staff planner, who will give a presentation on the case. Once the staff planner is finished with their presentation, the applicant will make their presentation, and then we'll open it up to the citizens who can make their comments. Once the citizens make their comments, we turn it back over to staff and then to the applicant. Actually, I think it's vice versa. And then we usually close the public hearing at that time, so no further comment will be given or received by citizens. So just so that you know what the process is, if you have any comments, please be sure to make your comments known at the dais. And with that, we'll move to Item Z1221. It's amend the Town of Gilbert Land Development Code, Chapter One, Zoning Regulations, Division Two, Land Use Designations, Article 2.4, Heritage Village Center Zoning District, Section 2.402, Land Use Regulations Table, Heritage Village Center District, Limitation L2, Drive-Thru Prohibited, relating to the restriction of drive-thru facilities. A definition for a service bay will be added. The effect of the amendment will be to permit with additional regulations of drive-thru use in the Heritage Village Center Zoning District. And with that, we welcome Ms. Lynda Edwards.
Thank you, Commissioners. You are familiar with this case. You heard it briefly for a citizen review study session. You heard it again in a study session. And I'm back this evening with a recommendation from the Redevelopment Commission and looking for your recommendation to, for the Town Council to consider. So I do have the presentation available for you, which I will review briefly because you have seen it twice. I also wanted to make a note that I did put on the dais for your review this evening, three emails that came in today for this project. I put them up at the dais and hopefully they were passed down to each one of you. You did receive them by email today, and they will probably be representatives today to talk about the content of these emails. One is from Alan Fitzgerald, one is from Mary Ellen Fresquez, and one is from Howard Morrison. So I believe that there will be discussion from the audience on that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of those questions if they're not here to answer them themselves. So I'm gonna go ahead and go through the PowerPoint presentation here pretty quickly because I believe you are familiar with it. This is what we're gonna review this evening. Why are we doing a text amendment? Where is this text amendment in the community? How does it relate to the vision of the Heritage District? The specifics or the options that were discussed? And also, a brief review of what was discussed at the public hearings. The reason why the text amendment has come forward is because an existing structure in our community currently operating with service bays is asking for consideration for a service bay to be converted or upused to a drive-thru. So with that request, staff did look at the potential of a land development code text amendment to modify that restriction. That restriction is currently in the land development code as L2, a limitation to, only for the Heritage Village Center Zoning District. On the screen, you will see that area noted in a bright blue. That is the Heritage Village Center Zoning District within the Heritage District area. And then here are three stars. Actually, isn't there four? Yes, there's four. There's one a little far south, it doesn't show up green here. There are four stars that show two existing drive-throughs, two existing service bay uses in the community. Three are north of the Western Canal. Specifically, Burger King and Dairy Queen are existing with infrastructure to support a drive-thru. The service bays, Express Lube, completely surrounded by existing infrastructure, and Clement's Garage, which has vacant land around it, south of the Western Canal. These are the three uses on the north side of the Western Canal. As a close-up, you can see on the eastern side, the infrastructure is completely developed with other businesses, Mini Storage, Dairy Queen, offices, a work, and a school. This is the location around Clement's Garage, which you can see has a lot of vacant area, including public land, which could develop as parking lot or other uses. A brief review on the vision. The vision for the Heritage District has been consistent throughout the development of the redevelopment plan and other documents that guide development. This was a slide that was presented to the Redevelopment Commission when it was discussed at the retreat in 2010. These are all the documents that continue to have the same vision. I'm mentioning this because it hasn't changed. But what is part of the vision includes a variety of indicators, a variety of pieces of the puzzle that create the vision. It's not just one part of a vision that is black and white. It is a variety of quality, mixed uses, active uses, pedestrian ambiance, public uses, basically a mixture of uses that complement each other. And it's intended to be a fairly high-intensity area with multifamily, multi-story buildings. The town will be building a parking garage, and we encourage new development to park off-site so they can maximize their property for intensity. The land development code has a purpose statement for the Heritage Village Center Zoning District. This is right out of our code, and this is where it mentions a mix of uses and high-density retail, service, entertainment, all these types of uses. Also, there is a note in here, "To enhance the pedestrian ambiance of the downtown, support mixed commercial uses, quality and variety." This is the actual vision. It's a bullet point-type statement. It is intended to cover a variety of uses over time. And I think that it is important to note that it can't, the vision for each use will be part of this, whether it's an intense user, two, three, four-story project, whether it's an individual store owner on a 20-foot wide parcel. So this vision is intended to carry over a range of uses, a range of size of development. These are the goals that support the vision. Included in here is ensure economic viability, promote the downtown with symbolic and cultural center, improve pedestrian auto circulation. There has been some comments from the previous public meetings about the safety of a project in this location as it relates to a drive-thru. All developments will go through a process through design review. All projects will require review by traffic engineering, so safety is a concern with every project that will need to meet those parameters. Now I'm moving on to the specifics of L2. The limitation which is prohibits drive-throughs is not just for restaurants. The L2 also prohibits drive-throughs with banks, dry cleaners, and retail sales. We did look at a few cities, Chandler and Scottsdale. They both also prohibit drive-throughs in their community, however, they do have existing drive-throughs that continue. Google search just for basic information shows that with review and approval of drive-throughs in village centers, they typically address access, pedestrian circulation, safety, hours of operation, noise, light, and visual impacts, especially when they are adjacent to residential. The Redevelopment Commission and the Planning Commission looked at six options. One of the Planning Commission members also mentioned that there should be a no-action alternative. That is a good point. It should have been one of our options. However, your denial would be the no-action alternative. So indirectly, you have that choice. So the first option that was looked at was the deletion of the L2 limitation. That would allow drive-throughs throughout the Heritage Village Center Zoning District, which basically but either side of Gilbert Road about one lot back, and of course, a large piece of vacant land on the northern part of the community. That was not a favored option because there was too much vacant land that was really intended for a more intense mixed use without the drive-thru. Option two was the favored, and basically what it is recommending here in option two is that the two existing drive-throughs north of the Western Canal can continue to operate as drive-thru facilities until the structure itself is no longer there. It also recommends that the service bay north of the Western Canal can be converted or upused to a drive-thru facility. It also recommends that a use permit be required, and the only use that can be used for the drive-thru facility are the restaurant use. There's two restaurant uses. Option three was to modify the L2 limitation so the drive-thru could only be applied to north of the Western Canal. That was not supported because there's a very large vacant parcel on the west side that could also develop to an intense project. Another option, number four, was that you would permit drive-throughs, but they would all require a use permit. Again, the same thought was, do we really want to permit new drive-thru facilities on areas that are currently vacant? Another option was to require use permits to have specific findings that address circulation, access, stacking, hours of operation. Again, the thought is that would be available to too much vacant land that wasn't the intent. And then, of course, option number six was a little different in that maybe all of the land north of the Western Canal should be rezoned out of the Heritage Village Center Zoning District because that restriction is not associated with office, or general commercial, or neighborhood commercial, or community commercial. And there was still a desire to keep the area north of the Western Canal part of the Heritage Village Center Zoning District because it does have a unique mix of uses and development regulations that create a village center. This is the proposed text. The middle column shows the existing limitations, and the new column, proposed, shows how the L2 limitation was modified. As you can see, the L1, or actually, the L2 is a strike-through, on each one of these creating an L2A and an L2B. The L2A is, continues to prohibit a drive-thru for the bank, the dry cleaner, and retail sales. The new L2B does permit a restaurant beverage service and a restaurant limited service to have a drive-thru facility, as I had described in option two, which is, it can continue as a drive-thru facility until that actual structure for the drive-thru facility doesn't exist. And the L2B would also include the text that mentions a use permit is required and only the two restaurant uses are permitted in the existing drive-thru facility and a service bay facility that converts to a drive-thru facility only north of the Western Canal. The new glossary term for a service bay facility is noted in your staff report as "A building containing bay or roll-up doors or similar service openings to provide a service within the building." We wanted to have that glossary term because we didn't have it in our code now. So in general, I gave you a very quick overview, and there are some residents here and business owners to speak to their concerns, both for and against the text amendment, mostly as it relates to the vision. So in summary, staff does support this text amendment as described as option two because it is a different animal north of the Western Canal. It are larger lots, it's completely surrounded by this infrastructure and users on the east side, and the, on the west side, the infrastructure and the access points are existing. So we believe that this is an opportunity to allow existing infrastructure to still operate and limit the uses with the use permit, address any concerns for conflicts with pedestrians and vehicles. So that's a really quick overview. I certainly would be able to assist with any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Questions, comments for staff, Commissioners? Commissioner Bianchi?
I have one. Lynda, I've heard a few points made about, would there be any improvements the town would need to make? Is, if we allow changes in use like this, to whether it would be roadway improvements or anything like that? Are there any improvements that you'd be aware of that the town would need to make if we approved this?
Chairman and Commissioners, Bianchi, even though this text amendment is not specific to a certain user, because we don't know what could happen, however, we did, we did review a potential proposed project. And if there were any improvements that needed to be made to the roadway, it would be at the burden of the developer or the landowner to redevelop or improve the site to meet town standards.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions for staff? Commissioner Fuller?
Sure, I got a quick question, Lynda. I'm not quite sure how I want to phrase this, so it may come out wrong, but with that preface. Yeah, I understand the argument, which is, hey, we need diversity, and the Heritage District maybe is not as focused as some people may think. But then, when we got the recommendation from the Redevelopment Commission, or their position, which is being supported here, it's almost like, we want diversity, but we really only want it north of the canal, on the east side, in existing spots, and it's just, I have a hard time wrapping my brain around those two concepts. They seem inconsistent to me. It's either, we want the zoning district, we want this diversity throughout the zoning district, or we don't. And I don't know how we can say, we really want diversity, yet we want it in these three locations. So can you just help me walk through that? How does that, how does that, how did you get comfortable with that, I guess is my question? Because it just seems, it seems inconsistent to me.
That is a good point, thank you, Commissioners. The comment that I didn't make was, the Redevelopment Commission did recommend approval of option two, as it is described, a vote four to one. The opposing vote did mention that the vision needs to be upheld for all of the factors in the vision statement, including pedestrian ambiance, and that a drive-thru doesn't meet that need. As far as diversity, staff looks at diversity for a range of factors: uses, architecture, types of residential, the mixture of uses in a community that are active, daytime, nighttime, public uses, and a cultural center. So diversity is all of those types of uses, and how they mix together, and how they complement each other, and how they create a village center. Not one of those uses stand alone would be diverse. It is the mixture of all of those uses.
I guess that's kind of my point, though. So if somebody came and said, you know, heaven forbid, something happened to the Oregano's, and they said, you know what, we want to put a project similar to the one that has been proposed, at the Oregano's, we're just gonna, we're gonna level it and build that project, wouldn't that still accomplish your diversity? But why wouldn't staff, why wouldn't that be supported under, what would be the reasoning not to support that? Just because the existing use wasn't there before?
I'm not sure if I can answer that question.
I understand it's a hypothetical.
And that's okay. But I do think that what we are looking at is, this is a newer part of town. Yes, it may be 20 or 30 years old, the structures, but they're all in good condition, and they're all operating well, north of the canal. There are also very large lots, as where on the middle block, the 200 blocks, some of the spaces are, you know, the buildings are all zero lot line, they all touch each other, and it's a different feel. It's truly a pedestrian, there is no parking on those lots. It is all building. So the difference here, I think, is that this is, north of the Western Canal is a little more auto-oriented, and it's completely built, and it currently operates safely with vehicles in the existing infrastructure. This text amendment affects an existing structure and a conversion of a service bay to a drive-thru facility. It's not a tear-down, it's an existing structure.
Well, the text amendment would affect the whole Heritage District, correct?
No, the limitation would affect only the two drive-throughs and only the service bay north of
Okay.
of the village center, only in the Heritage Village Center Zoning District, which is the blue on this graphic. So basically, this is the area, and only area that affect, that the L2 limitation affects. All of the other Heritage Village Center zoning in the Heritage District would not be affected. They would still
Right, I said that incorrectly.
Okay.
Yeah, I meant to say that, right. It's only, it's spot, spot's a by word, but it's, we're only doing it at a specific location, leaving the rest unchanged.
And we believe that, and staff felt comfortable with this, and I know it is sometimes difficult to put your arms around a text amendment until you have several public meetings and you do a little research, and that's what staff did. And staff did, some comfortable with this text amendment because it addresses an existing quadrant of this community that is functioning and it's built out. The rest of the Heritage Village Center, for the most part, is either built out or vacant. And the built-out is very small skinny lots that could not accommodate a drive-thru unless there was tear-down to accommodate one, complete tear-down, or in areas that were congested with the smaller lots, a very pedestrian area. I
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess, and we can talk about this more later. What I struggle with is, you know, really, is this, is this an appropriate use for the Heritage District generally? And then, is there a reason to treat this location differently than the rest of the Heritage District? And if we think it's an appropriate use in the Heritage District, why are we treating this area differently than the rest? You know, why are we treating parts of the district differently? Just because there's a canal between them? You know, I don't know. I mean, I wasn't around when we initially set it up, but that's what I'm struggling with. I mean, it's, I think, if you answer those two questions, I think you'll, you'll figure out where you stand on this, but it's just, it's difficult when you start treating different parts of a district differently, just because there's existing uses in one. I mean, maybe the question is, do we just remove it altogether from the Heritage District if we don't, you know, anyway? We can talk
And if I may, Commissioner, I left it out of my conversation, but I've included it in all the public meetings, and this was part of staff's comfort level in that we did process a text amendment to allow existing single-family in business zoning districts throughout our community to continue as single-family, expand and maintain their properties as single-family, which was not the case prior to the text amendment. And we felt comfortable with that because they were existing, they had invested in their properties, and with the town's general plan, the long-range plan, the 20-year plan, they were no longer able to put a pool in to maintain their homes without that land, or without that land development code amendment. So looking back at that and why we did that, staff became comfortable with, we looked at our community in detail, and we felt that the text amendment made sense. And that's why staff is comfortable here, because I relate that to this, that it's an existing infrastructure, it's been there for 20-plus years, it's working, and the proposed use is less intense than the existing. So that's how we became comfortable with how Gilbert has done a text amendment in the past to address existing uses that were in a zoning district that were not permitted.
It's a proposed use, really, less intense than, I mean, I know
A restaurant use is less intense than an auto use.
Wow, I would think you'd have like 10 times as many trips to it.
I think you're thinking about uses differently than like traffic, and
Yeah, I guess
I mean, you're just kind of weighing it differently.
Okay, no, thank you.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Sipple?
You know, I just have to add to that. I mean, we're gonna, someone's come to us, and so we're gonna look at possibly changing, and what's gonna stop us and what's gonna stop us in eight months, and another section wants something different. And so we look at that special section, and now we make a 2C just for that area, and, and then you lose the overall goal, in my mind, my, in my, my thought process on what the initial intent was. So, you know, to me, it's almost, you talk about puzzle, and that this is a puzzle, and when you change a piece of the puzzle, the whole puzzle doesn't work anymore. You can't get the puzzle put together. And as we start to change the pieces of the puzzle, the overall feel and, and what is currently working, change, could change. And so I would have to agree that, you know, A, is it something that we're willing to do for the entire district? And answer that question, and if it is, great, if it isn't, great. And then, how many more times are we willing to have these discussions as uses come in, and it doesn't fit for what they want, for that area, when there's plenty of area within the town of Gilbert that this would work currently? So.
All right, any additional questions, comments? Let's leave it more towards questions and comments for staff and hold our discussion for later. Nobody else? I had a quick question. I know that you had mentioned that for existing drive-through uses, until they are no longer there, this option would apply, or the one that you're recommending, does that, does that imply that the buildings can't be increased, or remodeled, or expanded, or reduced, or are they pretty much kind of set in stone as far as size is concerned? Or can they, can they evolve if this were permitted?
Chairman Whitman and Commissioners, if Dairy Queen wanted to double its size, it could.
Okay.
If Burger King wanted to double its size, it could. If Burger King went away and a new restaurant came in, and they wanted to have a larger outdoor area, or another part of their building, or go up, they could. Once the drive-through lane, and the, and the overhang and the menu window goes away, they would not be able to bring a drive-through back to whoever operates out of that structure.
So they could also add dual drive-through lanes, they could
No, the, the drive-through facility as is remains, because
So that cannot be remodeled, or moved, or located, relocated on-site?
I would think it could be remodeled if it was in disrepair, of course. But I thought your question was, could they add on to the building?
Well, I guess that, that implies that maybe the, the expansion includes a complete remodel, and maybe remodel or relocation of the drive-through facility. Like, how much, how much can the building expand if this were to be permitted and remodeled to accommodate this? Could it change from, maybe at, what, a 5,000, 6,000 square foot Dairy Queen to a 12,000 square foot Dairy Queen? And in order to do so, they have to demolish the existing drive-through and relocate it upon the completion of the expansion?
That's a very good question. I had not tried to picture that scenario. As we were reviewing this text amendment, it was the intent that once the drive-through was no longer existing, we did not think it could be knocked down and a new one put in. We thought about it, existing drive-through with the structure. As uses change over time, I did think that renovation or maintenance of it would be reasonable.
Okay. Right. As long as it isn't vacant for more than 12 months, right?
Well, this text amendment would no longer have that associated with it, because then if a drive-through facility is permitted, it is permitted over time for any restaurant user who wants to be there. So if Burger King went away, and it was vacant for a year, but a restaurant user wanted to come back, they could use the drive-through facility. If the Burger King was vacant for over a year, and a retail store came in, it could not use the drive-through. It's only for restaurant uses.
So is that with this text amendment? Or is that as by right with Burger King and Dairy Queen right now?
Without this text amendment, the Dairy Queen and Burger King could continue to have a drive-through facility if it was vacant for more, for less than a year. With this text amendment, as I'm going to show you the language here, this says, may continue to operate as a drive-through facility until the drive-through facility no longer exists. So what it also says here is that only a restaurant beverage juice or a restaurant limited use would be able to use the drive-through facility. So what this text amendment does, it allows the drive-through facility to continue as a, as a right of the property if it was used as a restaurant. If Burger King kept changing its restaurant uses today, without this text amendment, over and over and over and over again, and every time it was a restaurant user, they could continue to use the drive-through. If Burger King decided they didn't want to operate in that location anymore, and it became a bank, it could not have the drive-through. I hope that I'm not confusing.
I think the words that "no longer exists" part confuses me. I don't know about the other Commissioners.
Okay.
But structurally, no longer exists, or no longer exists as far as using the drive-through.
That is a very good point. And this, this language is intended to say, maybe it's better to say, until the drive-through facility structure per n not use, because the use on the land is a restaurant use. So we're not talking about a use here, we're talking about the drive-through facility, which is the drive lane, the canopy, and the menu window. The use inside the structure is, our use is permitted by the land development code, and we're not changing any of those. We're not changing any uses. We are keeping the uses the same, except for this drive-through facility north of the western canal. You can continue to have the drive-through facility only if it's a restaurant use. You cannot put a bank, or a dry, or, or, or a, a dry cleaner, or a retail use with a drive-through. Only a restaurant.
So just to clarify for me, if, say you get a, Dairy Queen goes away, which we hope doesn't happen, but say Dairy Queen goes away, and a restaurant use decides to come in and fill that spot, but decides not to use the drive-through.
If they
But just to operate solely as a, maybe a sit-down, take-out restaurant without the use of the drive-through, is that considered no longer being used, even though the drive-through is still physically there?
Well, that is another very good question, because I did not think about a restaurant use, user using the facility and closing down the drive-through. But those are very good questions that we do need to clarify. What, this text amendment says that once the drive-through facility is no long, no longer exists, meaning that it's torn down, that the building could be used for a restaurant, but if the actual drive-through facility is torn down, then it can no longer be used as a drive-through facility. So that is an excellent question that we probably need to clarify in the language.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for staff? All right. Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Okay, I'll leave that part up there.
All right. And since this is a text amendment, right? So we don't have an applicant formally. So we will open it up to the public. We have a number of cards here. And are these all ones that want to speak?
Yeah, or they didn't, or they didn't state if they wanted to.
Okay.
While I do not wish to speak.
Okay, we have a number of them. Some of them have indicated they wish to speak, and others did not indicate whether they wish to speak or not. So as I read your name, I'm gonna read the first. If you could come down here, state your name at the podium, and your city of residence. We give each speaker about three minutes to speak, and the timer will be started as soon as you begin to speak. We'll go ahead and call at the same time somebody else. If you just want to come and sit down, try to get through these as quickly as possible. And if you could also indicate whether you wanted to speak or not, that would be great for us. We have a Dan Roberts, says he's in favor and wishes to speak, and wants to be called first.
He's the landowner.
Well, he's not really the landowner, because it's a text amendment.
Well, true, but he is the landlord.
And the next speaker is Jim, I'm gonna butcher this, so I apologize. De Marche?
It's just what I think.
Do you, oh, De Marche. Do you wish to speak?
Yes.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind coming down?
I don't know, Dan.
All right, Dan.
Hello, my name is Dan Roberts, and I'm a resident of Gilbert, and also a property owner in the Heritage District for over 20 years. And I'm in favor of Z12-21. The Heritage District's goal of becoming a popular place to work, gather, dine, relax, shop, and live, has started to become a reality in the core and the south end of the district. However, it is not due to the zoning regulations. If our city stuck to the exact vision as seen in the dream pictures presented to you tonight as a desired ideal, today we would not have Joe's Real Barbecue, Oregano's, Postinos. Those buildings are not built according to the vision of two or more stories, as well as other restrictions. Yet, because they were allowed, today we have the exact desired outcome of vibrancy for the area. This text amendment does not interrupt any positive progress in the core or the south end of the district. It is limited to the existing buildings with drive-through or service bays north of the canal. The north end of the district is nothing like the south end or the core. The speed limit is higher, there are existing drive-throughs of Dairy Queen and Burger King, and there are no defining improvements. Most people feel like the downtown begins south of the canal, where the speed limit drops to 25 miles per hour. Those who do a visual inspection of the location understand the reasonableness of this request. Our building has a useful life of another 30 years and is not likely to be torn down anytime soon, nor will the buildings surrounding it. Therefore, some flexibility is needed. This property could go on forever in its grandfathered use as an automotive service business. New automotive uses are no longer allowed due to their adding, not to, that they don't add anything to the goal or the vision. This is a rare opportunity to go from meeting 0% of the goal to meeting 99% of the goal. Successful pedestrian areas are not always 100% car-free. Pedestrian areas such as AgriTopia are planning to incorporate some drive-throughs in their new epicenter main street shopping area, allowing a mixed use. The Santan Mall is a pedestrian-friendly area that incorporates vehicles intimately throughout it. Despite their tight regulations, downtown Scottsdale and downtown Chandler all have drive-throughs within their boundaries, and they're all part of a mixed use. The goal of the vision is a vibrant place to work, gather, dine, relax, shop, and live. It is not to have only two-story buildings and eliminate every car. For our property to reach its highest use and achieve the desired goals of the district of not have, of having a more vibrant, pedestrian-friendly, family place to live and work, this text amendment is essential. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Can next, I have Jim?
Yeah, my name's Jim De Marche. I'm a resident here of Gilbert. I've lived here for about 20 years, so I've watched what's happened in the downtown area. And I think tonight's been a perfect example of why there needs to be flexibility within the Heritage District. As you brought up different scenarios, it's almost impossible to write a document like that anticipating every single scenario. What happens if a restaurant comes in and doesn't use the drive-through? When you write a document like that, you can't possibly come up with everything and anticipate everything. And we can't, we couldn't anticipate, when you're writing this document, that at one point, an oil change business would not be a viable business. We wouldn't anticipate that at one point, we might have an opportunity to take out an oil change business and put in a coffee shop. You couldn't anticipate that when you're originally writing the document. But we have an opportunity now, in my mind, to upgrade that spot, as opposed to looking in down the future where potentially that oil change place was out of business, and we have an empty building sitting there. And now we have a choice to put in a coffee shop. I don't want us to be looking at this five years down the road, 10 years down the road, saying, we had this opportunity, we could have brought in a viable business, a coffee shop, which is gonna bring more people into the downtown core, which is gonna invite more businesses to join them into that area, which is what we want. And we stuck to the, what the Heritage District said, what the rules were going to be, and so we didn't make the change, and now we're sitting with an empty building. So in my mind, we have a great opportunity to upgrade this whole Heritage District by making this text amendment. So I'm totally in support of it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jim. And just for clarification, for the rest of you who may come up to speak, this is a text amendment globally for this district, and it, or, and I guess we're talking about this particular area. It's not for a use specific, so we need to refrain from commenting on a specific use or a specific piece of property for future comment. With that, there's a few, there's quite a few, but I'm, I have a few that do not wish to speak. I'm gonna read them into the record really quickly, and then we'll move on to the continued speakers. I have a Tina Cook, who says, I'm in favor of this item, and I do not wish to speak. Pamela Concreit, I'm in favor, I do not wish to speak. Caston Roberts, I'm in favor and do not wish to speak. Craig and Darcy Barnett, I'm in favor and do not wish to speak. Michael Fisher, I'm in favor and do not wish to speak. Blake Pierce, I'm in favor, I do not wish to speak. He has some comments, but it's specific to a use, so I'm not gonna read, I don't know if I should read those into the record or not. Christine Sable is in favor and does not wish to speak. Brian Ruffentine, in favor, does not wish to speak. Sheila Fitzgerald is opposed to the item and does not wish to speak. And then I have, next is Kurt Sable, says, I'm in favor of this item. Didn't indicate whether he wishes to speak or not?
No.
You don't, okay. Bruce Bergerson, I'm opposed to this item. Didn't indicate whether they want to speak or not.
No, thank you.
No, thank you, okay. Richard Fisher, I'm in favor. It doesn't indicate whether they wish to, he wishes to speak or not? Megan Ruffentine, in favor. Do you wish to speak?
I don't.
Okay. Sean Patterson, I'm in favor, maybe wants to speak? Yes? Okay, come on down. I have next, Alan Fitzgerald, who's opposed and wishes to speak. Up next. Sean, name and record, name for the record and your city of residence?
Sean Patterson, Gilbert.
Okay.
I would like to voice my approval for this text amendment. I've lived here in Arizona for 48 years. I'm 48 years old. I've worked down here. I used to buck rows and chop cotton down here. I've been down the Gilbert area my whole life. Patterson family has owned property down here, and we've developed it, and we've been a part of the Gilbert community for generations. And we've seen the development of Gilbert grow from just a couple of thousand to hundreds of thousands now. And we love this area, we want to see it continue to develop and to grow. And as we grow, things change, business change, and need to be massaged from time to time. And I believe the extension, or the amendment to the area north of the canal is a great opportunity where we can amend something and have a better use as the area permits. And I believe this area permits an area, a situation where we can amend the rules and regulations, stipulations, to where we can allow the vision to continue and to improve the area. And I believe by making this text amendment, it will improve the area from its existing use. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Up next, Alan Fitzgerald. And then next, I have a Brian Rogerson, I'm in favor and wish to speak.
Good evening. I also have been requested by Mary Ellen Fresquez to read a document for her. I don't know if that's appropriate or not.
Well, we, is it her email that she sent?
It is her email that she sent in.
We have that.
Okay. Any need to do such?
I'm gonna ask council. Council, would you prefer that that's read into the record, or?
It's distributed. I would say it would be up to the gentleman. If he wishes to read it into the record, that's fine.
Okay. I know that was distributed to us up here, but not to the public.
So she couldn't be here because she's ill today?
Certainly, if you'd like to read it, that's fine.
And I can't fill it out for her, I just want your permission if I
Sure, absolutely, go, go for it.
I'll be somewhat quick here, and attempt to abide by the rules, it's difficult. The issue is the text amendment. In regard to the issue, I'd like to make the following points, same points I made at the last redevelopment commission meeting. The argument made by staff that this change is supported by Heritage District vision statement is disingenuous. Crafting the vision statement required a significant amount of time, investment by the RDC, and we chose to be very specific about the wording. Plucking out words and phrases that support this text amendment is wrong. The vision needs to stand on its own. Safety continues to be a part of the equation. While, I'm gonna skip a little bit to try to abide by your rule. Is that appropriate?
That's fine, sir.
While I'm not a traffic engineer, it seems that only by establishing a physical barrier such as raised median, this issue would be addressed. If the solution occurs, town residents should not be responsible for paying for these changes. As it is, this text amendment is coming forward to solve a business-related problem. For one business, any cost must be borne by the business. Approving the text amendment is not the proper approach to solving one constituent's business problems. If a change occurs, a more comprehensive approach needs to take place within the Heritage District. This approach should include master planning and an economic study. A revised vision statement, mission, and goals, as well as other important elements, could be addressed at that time. I've been a redevelopment commissioner for 12 years, and I have never been a part of anything so controversial as this text amendment. The process itself has been very confusing. At the planning commission At the planning commission meetings, we have been told not to mention a specific business. At the RDC meetings, we have been told it is easier to address this change with a real project in mind. Which is it? I agree with one of the planning commissioners who stated one option for the text amendment should be no change. I urge you to vote against this text amendment. Thank you in advance. Signed, Mary Ellen Fresquez. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, if I could speak on my part-
Absolutely.
Appreciate your patience. Frankly, I applaud the personal support by the friends in favor of this text amendment. I've searched for the compelling reason that justifies this zoning change. I haven't found it. It isn't within the scope and the vision of the Heritage District to make this text amendment. There's a number of issues that include safety that should be addressed before we change the amendment, before we change the zoning. This text amendment will be further reaching than simply what's going on on that corner. It is a door opening to say that we can move and change without the proper study, without the proper addressing of the vision and the mission of the Heritage District. Recently, there's a number of transactions and activities in the Heritage District. It's becoming an exciting place to do business. We don't need to make a decision concerning empty buildings. That will take care of itself in the recovery of our economy. We need to stay on the course. We need to stay and look at the current level of excitement and the business and the development that is happening right now in the Heritage District. We don't have to fear something's going to happen if we don't make this change. What's going to happen is we're going to fill in this property because we are recovering. It's evident, and it's quite apparent in Heritage District businesses. Thank you. I urge you to vote against this amendment.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if I, with you reading the letter from Ms. Vasquez, if I got your name for the record?
I apologize. My name is Alan Fitzgerald. I'm a resident of Gilbert.
Perfect. Thank you. Up next is Brian Rodgerson, in favor and wishes to speak. And then I have a Brian Bergerson, is opposed and wishes to speak.
My name's Brian Rodgerson. I'm a resident of Gilbert, moved here with intent from northeast Mace about five years ago. I'm in favor of the text amendment. I think that vision, vision statements and things of this nature, as previously discussed, evolve over time and have to be looked at on a, on a more regular basis. I don't believe that something that's been written, you know, previously can just stand the test of time without being reevaluated. The, the common sense nature of this use and what it brings to the area just makes total sense to me. As a resident of Gilbert, I see really no downsides to it. I think trying to pigeonhole it into being a specific use for a specific property or and/or the effects it has on other properties is, is a little far stretch considering your ability to make changes and to adjust accordingly. So I'm in favor of the amendment. I know the property and the different areas, and I don't see anything to downside to it. And I think there's certainly checks and balances in place to have the vision overall stay in place for the long run and for that area to continue to, to grow and to, you know, bring in a business that's substantive, that's looking to join the community in economic times where people are, you know, not looking to necessarily start up businesses or to take on these type of endeavors. And I just, to me, I think it's, it's all upside and very little downside considering the present use of the facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Brian Bergerson, opposed and wishes to speak. Following I have Linda Bergerson, who's also opposed and wishes to speak.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Brian Bergerson, resident of Gilbert, property owner and business owner in the Heritage District. My concern is that we open a Pandora's Box. It's, I'm not looking at the short term, I'm looking at the vision, 20, 30 years down the line. And if we make exceptions, and that's what we're talking about, exceptions, we are setting precedents. Any lawyer worth his weight is going to use those exact same terms when he comes to the next time for another business that needs an exception, because they're a good resident of Gilbert or they've been here a long time. I don't see how we can afford to do that for long. That means we'll have a lot more different uses going on down here, including more drive-throughs. I know there's already talk about trying to get rid of the two-story part of this whole thing. There's, that's another part of this whole thing. What are we going to do? Just gut the whole thing? If our, if this zoning doesn't have any teeth, then what good is it? You can look at, we need to look 20 years down the line and what's it going to look like? With this zoning plan, we have a plan, we have a vision, we can see what it's going to look like. If not, we can, if we veer off and we miss target, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know how that's going to turn out. It may be good, it may not. But we can look at neighbors, we can look at Tempe. Tempe used to be rated as one of the top downtowns there was. It's no longer. It's no longer, people talk about it. It's a venue for concerts, it's clubs, it's chains. The mom and pops have left, the changing hands are gone. It's high crime now. And the vision was to stop that. The vision was this downtown is going to continue to be charming, a Heritage District safe for pedestrians. I just want you to think about the long-term goal of this thing and that we don't allow it to get out of hand. Thank you very much. I'm opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Bergerson. Up next, Linda Bergerson. And following that, I have Nancy Roberts, who's in favor and wishes to speak.
I'm Linda Bergerson, and I'm a resident and business owner in Gilbert. I'm here again to express opposition to the proposed text amendment. I'm opposed on the basis of several issues, traffic safety, direct conflict with the established vision of pedestrian-friendly Heritage District, the potential impact related to the property directly north of the proposed change, which we've heard nothing about, which will then share a drive-through, I think it's called a labor-ready, but they'll be sharing a drive-through parking lot, which nobody has addressed. I think that's quite odd. But more importantly, like Brian said, the precedent for exemption. I believe that this will set, I believe will set by making this change. The rule to exclude future drive-throughs in the district was made with a very intentional purpose to create a pedestrian-friendly Heritage District. This change would not only open the opportunity for other like business in the district to ask for a similar exemption when they receive an offer they can't refuse. It also sends a message to new development that the rules that were implemented really don't mean much to the governing bodies in the town of Gilbert. With all the discussion at the past meetings and comments from the RDC commissioners regarding the importance of fairness and of increasing sales tax dollars to Gilbert, it leads me to believe there'll be an openness for existing business to also compete along these same avenues, because drive-throughs definitely can increase sales tax dollars. I imagine our current liquor store would be happy to have a drive-through, and I can speak that burglies could certainly increase sales tax dollars if we were allowed to have the same type of drive-through at our facility. I guess it just involves lobbying the right people in power to apply for these special exemptions and rules. I also urge you to carefully consider the long-term ramifications of this proposed change, not only in regard to how it affects this business, but the additional consequences of removing the existing rule that currently limits how long the current drive-throughs may remain empty and still remain the rights to have a drive-through. Why was a vision, a rules ever put in place for our Heritage District if they were not meant to be followed and enforced? I do understand having flexibility for plans and visions, but creating drive-throughs in our very unique Heritage District should not be one we would be willing to compromise on. If this building can be repurposed into a restaurant classification as it's been proposed, then it certainly should be able to be done without the addition of a drive-through, which is what, which then we would have no opposition to. I urge you to vote no on this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Bergerson. Up next, Nancy Roberts. And that appears to be, I think, all the cards that, to speak that I have. If there's anybody else wishing to speak, please pull out one and get it to the front for us. Ms. Roberts?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nancy Roberts. I'm a Gilbert citizen and a property owner in the area. Is 22 years long enough to try to achieve a vision with no progress? Yes, this area north of the canal has had no progress, and that's how long the vision was put in, long ago. South of the canal has seen great progress. However, due to the north end being built out and very different in nature than the core or south end, there has been no reinvestment or upuse in the direction of the vision whatsoever. This area is nothing like the core of the downtown. It is a completely different area. It is not attracting the Joes or the Postinos. It is fully built out with no change in sight. This case stands on its own merits, as can be seen by the opinions of those who have studied it. Before you form an opinion on this request after giving a few hours of your time, consider those who have collectively spent hundreds of hours studying this. First, the RDC commissioners have been appointed as specialists in the downtown area. They have met to discuss the six times spent hundreds of hours collectively studying this specific case and have continually voted in its favor, four to one. Do not render these commissioners' opinions effectively useless by taking their opinions lightly. Second, the Gilbert planning and zoning staff, your hometown professionals working full-time for the welfare of our city, have reviewed every facet of this and recommend your support. Third, Gilbert founding fathers, stakeholders and visionaries, Joe Johnston and Howard Morrison, have both attended meetings, sent you letters of support believing this is the best thing for the area, and urge you to vote in its favor. And finally, numerous Gilbert residents have consistently turned out, time after time, to these meetings in support of this. In our lifetime, will this depressed area move any closer to the vision without this? No, the building has a useful life of another 30 years and will further develop into undesirable but legal automotive uses, pawn shop or quick loan outlets. There are many other cities that developers can choose to put their money, but today we have an incredible opportunity of a viable business who is able to remodel and do the improvements necessary to revitalize-
Hey ma'am, I'm sorry, I need to get you to refrain from talking about a specific business. This is a text amendment for this whole area.
Do not miss out on this opportunity to promote reinvestment and upuse. If the city hopes to have high-density residential across the street, this would make the more desirable neighbor as well as get rid of an unwanted use and help get the area in line with the vision. In closing, look at the success of the Santan Mall, a very pedestrian-friendly area that is intimately and thoroughly invaded by vehicles. Maybe eliminating 100% of them isn't such a good idea, but rather properly placed, they would indeed help to reach our desired goals. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't have any further comment cards. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and turn it back over to staff. Does staff want to follow up with any comments?
Madam Chair, I don't have any follow-up, but I'm standing by for your questions.
Great. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Bianchi?
Yeah, Linda, one question I did have was, if this were to be approved, how do we handle hours of operation through this in the HVC district?
At this time, there's no limitation unless through a use permit, you believe that hours of operation should be a condition of approval.
So it would go through that, it would go through a use permit processing? Okay.
That's correct.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the dais for Commissioner comment discussion.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
I'll close the public hearing too as well. Sorry about that. Thank you. Who wants to go first? Commissioner Bianchi? Leave us off.
Go first. Get on my list here. I really don't like the idea of changing the code to accommodate a specific use, but I do respect those who want to stick to the vision that we've heard about. But I think when you look at this, when you look at the east side of Gilbert Road, north of the canal, it really does have a different feel and focus of the area just south. And I think to create a pattern of similar development north of the canal is really a long-term vision that may take a few changes of uses to even achieve that. I still have doubts as to why this area is, has HVC zoning, given that the use is along this stretch, as exemplified through this lengthy text amendment process. And we still have drive-through uses in operation, which, again, is outside the vision, is what we've heard. For me, the bottom line is, I want to create an opportunity to replace a use and allow a building to redevelop. I don't know what options are available other than a teardown. And if you look at the building, it's surrounded by asphalt, and it's a large setback from the street, which is much different than the use is just to the south in the core of the Heritage District. And I think while this amendment is not my top preference, it does allow the opportunity. It's been recommended by a majority of the redevelopment commission, and it allows the use to be vetted through staff review and through the use permit process. So with that in regards, if we're going to keep it as HVC zoning, I'd be in favor of the amendment.
Commissioner Steiger?
I don't get cynical very often, but I'm really cynical about the way L-2B is written and the fact that our attorney for the town and our chairperson have to continually ask speakers not to talk about a specific property, and yet, L-2B is so written around a specific property that, you know, I just, every time one of you has to say something like that, I chuckle, because this whole thing is just about one property. So, given that, I want to take you to, I always talk about, when I, I find that there's a bigger focus or a smaller focus on something, then there's a bigger problem. It's about the forest, the trees and the weeds. And when we're down in the weeds, we're talking about one particular property here. And with a text amendment, we're kind of in the, we're dealing with the trees. But I think the big issue here is, and at the forest level and at the strategic level, is that there's a plan and there's a vision, and as some people have pointed out, there needs to be flexibility, but I certainly don't see flexibility in L-2B. And we need to evolve a vision, but a text amendment, in my opinion, is not the way to do it. And there's some comments from the pro arguments to the text amendment that there's no downside. I see a downside as abandoning a process, losing the big picture, and, and as some other commissioners have commented, what we're doing is using an exception process to make changes to a vision. So, the other thing that struck me is that the RDC voted four to one for it, but I really questioned why there was no option, either from their perspective or staff's, to say, "Option eight would be no change," or "Option nine would be no change, but we recommend a relook at the, at our vision documents." So, considering the fact that I'm not a big fan of changing vision statements by exceptions and approving changes for just one particular issue that, that needs, in this case focuses at the forest level, on some bigger challenges with, is it 22 years old? Is it 10 years old? Is it just a couple of years old, based on the last general plan? I would like the town to take a bigger look at the Heritage District, because I see that there are many more questions left unanswered from this dialogue, and this is great, because it always takes a spark to start change or relook at a plan, and this particular property has caused that spark, but, so I'm not in favor of trying to use a text amendment to, to fix a bigger problem.
Thank you, Commissioner Steiger. Commissioner Ayler?
I've wrestled with this one, because traditionally, I'm one to look at a building and want to reuse it, and if there's a, a use that makes sense and kind of fits with the flow, then, then I'm all in favor of it. And I really went back and forth on the area north of the canal, and how is that to be in how it is today? Can that be reused? Can they be, do they have to stay as they are? And I never really got a full purpose of that. I think that there's a lot of use to those buildings. So to tear them down and start it all over wouldn't work, but could they be reused in different purposes? It's done all the time, many cities all over the nation. So, kind of looking at that, and then kind of looking at this text amendment is definitely for one property. And I actually start to get a little more concerned now with the L-2B holding the Dairy Queen and the Burger King, because I could definitely see that Burger King being enveloped into a master building that goes on the larger site and work together and kind of hold the drive-through, but tear it down- the drive-through, but tear down the Burger King and build buildings around it so they get to reuse it, and they get to keep the drive-through under this. I can see someone kind of going that way. So I actually started to worry about the wording of the Burger King and the other two properties that aren't mentioned, or are mentioned, but not as restaurants themselves. I look at the building, and it's mentioned, if it's been used, that building can be reused as a restaurant. It's been proved that we can reuse this as a restaurant with a drive-through or without a drive-through. So, to have that use, kind of starts to say that we can use it, and looking at the site plan that was given to us, just kind of looking at it, it just, there seems to be other issues with it. I think that if we're going to have a Heritage District, we have to hold to the vision. I think that by doing this, we're looking at it as, okay, and it's kind of brought up, what's the next property that wants to do this? Because they have a reason for it, but, you know, it doesn't quite fit the vision, but it'd be all right, because it won't hurt that bad. And I could see that with the buildings to the south. There's a bunch of houses that are in the actual south of going down to Elliott. Maybe those start wanting to have drive-throughs, because the service bay is not a drive-through. It's a big opening, but it's definitely not a drive-through. To me, there's a big difference between a service bay and a drive-through. They both have openings, but that's about it. So, I look at that, I couldn't be in favor of this for multiple reasons, and that's kind of where I sit.
Thank you. Commissioner Sipple?
I'll just continue that. Again, to reiterate what I had already indicated is, it's either a change that we can make for the entire area, or it's not. And that's what we need to look at, again, is the area in totality. So if this is something we're willing to do north or south of the canal, that's what we need to look at. So again, like has been mentioned, L-2B, it's very specific. So again, if we want to look at changing the vision of the Heritage District, then maybe it's time to reconvene committees and groups, and relook at the whole thing in its totality, and see if we need to carve out certain areas that don't work in it anymore. Maybe on the east side of a road, it works, but not on the west side of the road anymore, and it L-shapes, but those are things that I think we should push to the community as a whole to vote at, and vote on again, if there needs to be changes that need to be done. And we, there was a mention that the area is built out north of the canal. I'm assuming that that individual is talking about just the east side, as the west side is completely available for building. So we don't want to put something that would make it for the whole north of the canal area, because we've got a large area that's yet to be developed there. That summarizes everything that I've got.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Commissioner Sipple? I think we kind of got, that he was against the amendment that's proposed tonight.
I have-
That's what I gathered from his comments.
I have been from the beginning.
Okay. Commissioner Fuller? Would you like to speak?
I would.
Are you, are you, are you still forming your opinion? Vice Chairman?
Okay. Ms. Edwards, I have a question. The property that's just north of the property that we're really not supposed to be discussing, the property that's at the corner of Gilbert and Juniper, can you tell me what kind of business that is, that's right north of the tire, the oil change center?
Commissioners, I have the facility on the screen.
Yes.
And the little building there is an office on the north side that is on Juniper.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I don't know if I can, no, I can't touch the screen and see if I can put this little thing, oh yeah.
Yeah.
This building here is an office, and this is the express lube, this is Dairy Queen, there's an office complex back in here, and this is a school, and then mini-storage.
Okay, thank you. I get my oil changed there, but I, for the life of me, could not remember what was in that building. As far as the, what Commissioner Steiger said about the Heritage District Plan and the general plan, if memory serves me right, and we worked on the general plan for almost three years, the Heritage District Plan was accepted as it is into the current general plan. We didn't make any changes or amendments to it at the time that we did this update to the general plan. So it was just word for word, swept right into the general plan, or reference to it as is, no changes made. So it stands to whatever date, as you were saying, to whatever date it was conceived or last amended, amended, it goes back to that. I've been struggling with this issue for a few months since we first saw it and started discussing it, and I see so many different points on both sides. The discussion of upusing this building and creating a new business in its location without discussing it specifically, giving the opportunity there. The discussion of whether or not the Heritage District, the boundaries possibly need to be changed, and that that discussion should come forward, and if this text amendment went into place, would that be a discussion that would come to the forefront? And possibly then, because this amendment was made, the Heritage District boundaries would possibly be changed, and go from the canal south, down to just south of Elliott Road, where it goes. As Commissioner Sipple was referring to, that, you know, sometimes it's no longer viable, and maybe just the east side, just the west side stays, maybe the east side goes, but then we're still encompassing Burger King in there. So we have an issue that maybe the solution would be go to north of the canal. I've struggled with the fact that there are current businesses down on Gilbert Road that owners spoke this evening, that if they came forward wanting to do a drive-through, knowing full well that they're not allowed in the Heritage District, but decided to try their luck, would we make a text amendment to allow them? There's a situation with a coffee shop that sits there now, that the business next door burned down, and it left a whole open, wide-open property that they possibly could come in and ask for a drive-through for their business. And it's a current coffee shop that exists. And, you know, would we do that? Is it the same kind of situation, being able to reuse a building, being able to reuse a location, being able to basically do the same exact thing that we're discussing here The RDC came to the conclusion that the option number two would be a viable solution. They had a lot of discussion about, I read all of the minutes, I read every single word, about whether or not current businesses would be, have been accepted at some point or not, which they were, and that was brought up again tonight, that businesses that are down there would probably, wouldn't have been there if, you know, you weren't able to bend rules or change conditions or make amendments. There wouldn't be some of the businesses that we have there right now. They discussed the opportunity to change this building and be able to reuse it. We can't discuss the use, so it's difficult to talk about the traffic, but as the, Mr. Roberts mentioned, that the speed limit is different right there on that section of Gilbert Road. It changes to 25 just south of the canal. I know, because I go up and down that road a lot during the day and on the weekends with my husband. I'm struggling with whether or not this is the right choice at this time. Like I said, if we go ahead and do it and make this amendment, or if the amendment goes to council with our recommendation, would that make the push to possibly change the boundaries of the Heritage District? Maybe it would take, it'd be the time to say, then let's look at this, and let's change those boundaries at this point, and let's use that canal, and maybe let's get some signage for the Heritage District, because I also saw in the minutes that there isn't any, and when I went back and thought about it, I know there isn't any. And maybe it could be put right there on the canal, where the beautiful water features are, that would lead you right into that Heritage District. Maybe that's all part of this plan. Maybe this is the first step, and we say that this amendment passes, and, or we make a recommendation for this amendment, and it goes to that step. And it, it changes the Heritage District as we know it today, but as I said at the, I think the first meeting that we saw this, I don't even ever think of that section being in the Heritage District. And I know, I've been on this planning commission for 12 years, as long as Mary Ellen's been on RDC, and I know where the Heritage District is, obviously, because I work with it all the time here at the planning commission level. I'm still, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm still struggling. I want to hear what Commissioner Fuller has to say, and I want to hear what the chairman has to say.
Commissioner Fuller, are you ready to speak?
You bet. You know, I think, I will make this fairly brief. I've got way too many comments and pieces of paper that I've written stuff down on. You know, I think, when, I agree with what a lot of people have said. When you think of the Heritage District, I do not think, even though I know where it is, I don't think of this part. So, the question is, for me then, is, you go back and say, well, who's the applicant on this? It's the town. So the town's coming to us and saying, hey, what do you think of modifying these couple spots over here and making this change? And the question is, for me, that, you know, the town's asking us our opinion on that, and one of the justifications we get is, you know, this is really kind of a different area, and, you know, the diversity argument is a big one, and this is a different area than kind of the rest of the Heritage District, and that's why we're leaving alone, which for me begs the question, which Commissioner Bianchi brought up, which was, okay, well, does this really even belong in the Heritage District then? I mean, if we're having that, if that's the rationale that we're giving, is this the right answer to that question? And I don't know. I mean, I, we haven't had a discussion on that topic. We've had a discussion on this text amendment, but we haven't had a discussion on whether this area belongs in the Heritage District. I agree 100% that when most of the people in the town of Gilbert think of the Heritage District, and probably nobody in this room eats in the Heritage District more than I do, in my family, is, we don't think of that area. We just really don't. And I think the argument, I can't remember who made it, when you're going down, and the speed limit, I just think those are, those are very persuasive arguments on, it just feels different. Now, at the same time, I'm not ready to throw out and say, well, since in the discussions we've had here the last couple of times, then we should go ahead and make this limited change. I'm not sure I'm ready for, I say we have the discussion on whether this belongs in the Heritage District or not. I just don't know if, why we, I just can't, for the life of me, really figure out, you know, why we would make this limited change to these limited parcels that are so specific, they're so specific, without having the broader discussion, as the applicant is the town, on whether there needs to be a change, a universal change to the heritage, to this portion of the Heritage District, if that's the justification we're getting. And I don't know if I would be in favor of that or not. I, the struggle I have is, I think this is actually probably a really good compromise that was brought up. I mean, I think, you know, it is a good compromise, where you say, okay, we're not going to let go of the Heritage District designation, we're going to limit it to these few sites, we're not going to touch the rest of it, and it's really not going to change much. Yes, you're going to go from a Jiffy Lube, or Easy Lube, or whatever it was before, to a, this specific site, to a drive-through, and none of the other ones can really modify if there's a discontinuance of drive. I get that. And that's, that's a, it's a good crafted compromise, but I think we're ignoring the bigger question, that's at least staring me in the face, is, does this belong in the Heritage District? If everybody here seems to think that it feels completely different. And so, you know, I guess my, my thought would be, look, if we're not going to have that discussion on whether this belongs in the Heritage District or not, then I would probably be in favor of this text amendment. I really would. I mean, just from the way it feels. I would prefer to have that discussion, and given that the town is the applicant, I don't see any reason why. I know there's, you know, specific users out there, but the town's the applicant, and I, I would be fine having that discussion, is, if it just came back to us like any other text amendment. We directed staff to go back and look at that. I mean, I, that's my thought.
Is it my turn, or do you want to go ahead?
I think Josh-
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I had a quick-
Oh. Commissioner Ehler?
Oh, that's all right. Well, I just, getting to the feel of the Heritage District, and I'm agreeing with everything that's being said, but if that other side was developed, you would lower the speed limit, you would have the feel, and then we could start looking at, I completely agree that, right now, we need to look at what's the boundaries of the Heritage District, and that needs to be relooked at more than looking at one specific space. I don't see that we're holding that. So I would be in favor of looking at resetting the boundaries as a text amendment, but I'd think that as a feel that we're looking at it today, and that property, that large property will be developed, and it will come around when, nobody knows, but, but it will come around, and it will have a heritage feel if we leave it in the Heritage District. And the, the part of the Heritage District and the code and ordinance that we have set doesn't make it where it's impossible to develop. I mean, it's pretty friendly to a developer. So, there is issues, that people talk about two stories and all that, and I, you know, see that there's stuff to be looked at as, as it was written. But I think we need to look at it as globally, as a text amendment, instead of just as, as a weed in the forest, as Mr. Steiger was talking about.
Thank you, Commissioner Ehler.
I kind of have the same feelings when I, I've kind of struggled as well, in that this, this area feels much different, and everybody has said that basically on the dais. And I think a lot of the residents have said kind of the same. It has a different feeling to it. But it's also part of a long-range plan. That's the purpose of it. It includes this boundary, includes this area. It's kind of like the general plan. We have a long-range plan, we have a long-range goal for how we want the town, to see the town developed. That's basically how the redevelopment, this boundary, has been set as well. And I feel like, if we can flip back to the slide that has the language proposed for the amendment, I'm somewhat confused by the language, obviously, based on my questions before, but I find it very interesting that in one sentence, we're saying, "All the drive-through uses that exist there today can continue to operate until such time they no longer operate." And then the very next sentence, it says, "Oh, and, an existing service bay." Like, we can convert you to a drive-through, but nobody else. Nobody else in this area can convert to anything else.
Can a drive-through convert to a service bay?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, not with that language, but I think it's quite, kind of interesting that we're focusing on drive-through uses, yet we're allowing a different type of use to convert to a drive-through, but not any other uses. And so, that bothers me. The, it also kind of, it also bothers me that we're using this text amendment as a way to spot-zone something, for one particular user. We're not spot, we're not talking about the Burger King, and we're not talking about the Dairy Queen. Unfortunately, this is all skirted, this is the big elephant under the white tablecloth, that we're not supposed to talk about, we're not supposed to see, but the plan is for flexibility to allow one specific use to be converted. I have an issue with that. I, I think there are bigger issues to look at, and that I don't feel it should be accomplished in this manner. If that's, if they truly want to change the boundaries and the, the idea and the uses for the Heritage Village Center and the district, then I think that needs to be done in a comprehensive plan, not by one specific use that's being converted from one, being allowed to convert from one use to another use. I, I think that if, if the long-range plan is to incorporate that property into other downtown-type uses, then the plan needs to stay in place, as is. I just, I don't feel that, that by allowing this drive-through use, that we're doing any great benefit to the town or the specific area. We might be doing a benefit to one particular user, but that's not what we do in a text amendment. The text amendment is as a whole. Zoning is for one specific use, one specific property, and I think if we're going to do that, we should do it in that venue, and in that manner, rather than in the- rather than in this text amendment manner. And so, the language bothers me, and the process in which it has come about has bothered me. Do I think, in general, excluding all the ideas of the Heritage Village Center, and the restrictions there, and if, does this use that we're not supposed to be talking about, would it be a good fit? Yeah, probably. It probably would be a good fit. But that's not what it is designed around, and that's not what encompasses this entire area, and that's not the feel. And so, with that in mind, I'm going to have to vote no. Commissioner Peterson? Does anybody else that wants to add any more comment? Before, Commissioner Sipple?
Yeah, Chairwoman, can we request an individual vote on this, instead of a in and a as a group?
Absolutely. I'm taking tally, but absolutely.
Yeah. I'd prefer an individual vote on this issue, if we could.
Yeah. Commissioner Peterson?
Chairman, everything you said was very well done, very well thought out. I was just going back and reading some more of the notes again, over again, that I highlighted while I was reviewing this case, and I think you're right. I think that, and I said it at one of the past meetings, is that we're putting the cart before the horse. I think other decisions probably need to be made before we go back and look at this one, and whether that means changing the boundaries of the Heritage District, and giving these businesses north of the, you know, if it happens to be, the boundary happens to be the canal, which I think is probably the most logical spot, giving these businesses an opportunity to be able to do other things, that they would be able to rightfully do, or by use permit, or however the cases may follow through, I think that the land to the west will probably still be developed. I don't know about the speed limit even changing there, if that property is developed. It's pretty hard to get people to go down to the 25 where they're supposed to. But I would envision, like I said before, signage at the canal, and the water features and all. I, I think, you know, hearing everything that I've heard, and all the struggling that I've been doing, tells me that, that this isn't the right choice, that, I wouldn't be struggling so much if I thought it was the right choice. So, I would have to not support this amendment, at this time.
Can I make one quick comment?
Absolutely.
If we do see this, again, I think this, or if we do talk about this, this area, again, I think it would be helpful to have a comprehensive look at it. You know, right now, we were talking about just drive-throughs, but if we really all believe that this area feels differently, then why would we limit the text amendment to just drive-throughs? We should look at, I mean, we could, in theory, get a user in this area, in two months, that says, well, this feels different, so now we want to talk about setbacks, or whatever's unique to the Heritage District. So, if we're going to look at this area as being different than the rest of the Heritage District, which we may not, maybe the majority of the commission is like, nah, we want to leave it as is. But if we are, then I don't know why we would limit our review to just drive-throughs and service bays. We should, if we're going to have a text amendment, we should direct staff, which would be at some other time, to really look at all the deviations that would be appropriate for this area, not just one. And so, instead of doing a text amendment for 20 deviations, you know, 20 different text amendments, we would do one that would cover all the deviations that would be appropriate for this part of the Heritage District, if any, if any deviations are even appropriate.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, do I have somebody who wants to make a motion?
Chairwoman?
Commissioner Sipple?
Maybe this is a question, they said that one of the options, I guess, option nine or eight, is to not approve this. So, by not approving it, it makes it an option, so that option isn't up there. So, I guess, when I'm thinking through motions, there were, there was this motion to make here, but I suppose another motion could be just to move, to deny Z12-21. Are you comfortable, yeah, no? Yep, there's your attorney. See, I knew.
Counsel?
Chairman Whitman, Commissioner Sipple, the motion would be to recommend to counsel to deny the motion, I mean, the amendment.
With that, I'll make my motion.
Okay.
I move to deny the recommendation to counsel for Z12-21.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Sipple, a second by Commissioner Steiger, all those in favor? I guess we could do it individually.
You do it generally, and then she can do the roll call afterwards.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, individually?
Or you can just have, you can just tell them.
The only, only dissenting vote was Commissioner Bianchi.
Thank you.
Thank you. When does this go to public hearing, the council? Do we know? Because obviously, our recommendation is simply that, it's just a recommendation to the town council, and the town council will make the final decision.
January 17.
January 17 is the council hearing.
I think, if I may, Chairman, I think it's important for everybody to know that, like the chairman just said, this is just a recommendation to the town council, they will make the final decision. So, the arguments that were made here tonight, I would make to the town council, because they are by no way bound by what we did, they just, it's just a recommendation.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number nine, it's GP 1207, a minor general plan amendment to change land use classification of approximately 15.3 acres of real property located at the south, or the northeast corner of the Union Pacific Railroad right-of-way and South Wrecker Road, from single-family detached land use classification to public facility institutional land use classification. And we also have the companion zoning case with that, which, if we don't mind, we'll go ahead and read in as well. It's Z12-20, amend ordinances numbers 1900, 2179, 2195, and 2304, to rezone approximately 15.3 acres of real property, generally located at the northeast corner of Wrecker and the Union Pacific Railroad, or right-of-way, from single-family detached, with a planned area development overlay, to public facility institutional zoning district with a planned area development. And we'd like to invite, open the public hearing, invite Ms. Karavid.
Thank you, Madam Chair Whitman, and Commissioners, Happy New Year, and let me just open my file for the exhibits, and I'll be briefing my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
This item is coming as a continuance to the Planning Commission, is a portion of the Coolie Station that is over 300 acres. This is the general location in our zoning map, which is the northeast corner of Wrecker and the railroad, United Pacific Railroad. We're going to see the next slide that gives us an aerial, and shows the boundaries, the outside boundaries of the Coolie Station, and the inner boundaries is, this master plan was rezoned in two cases, that's why we have to refer to all the ordinance that constitute the Coolie Station. The next exhibit shows the land use exhibit that the general plan request calls for, and that is the 12.9 acres that was reduced from the original request, for an educational facility, a charter school. In essence, staff supports the concept of having an educational facility at this location, because in the overall master plan years back ago, we had the school district, the Higley School District, identifying this area also as a school facility. Being a high, medium-to-high-density, multi-used concept and vision for the entire area, an educational facility complements all the residential mixed uses, and commercial and office uses that will be there in the future. The next exhibit shows the, let me see.
Let me go back.
All these exhibits that you see show the development plan that now comes for this specific parcel 16, at this location, and will be part of the overall master plan, which has been developed north of Williamsville Road, and even further than that, pretty much this area south of the Williamsville Road alignment that is already improved, is vacant. So, this little exhibit here shows the development plan in the big picture of it. The next exhibit will be also part of the ordinance, stating the specificity of the developments, off-site developments, and right-of-way improvements for the different streets. This particular street that will be bordering along the northern boundary is the Boulevard Section, which is this one. So, the developer already knows the type of improvements, and the sections of the streets that they are obligated to develop, to meet the intent and the vision of the gateway, specifically the Coolie Station, big plans. This other exhibit, that will be also part of the ordinance, and it has been in the past, shows what type of streets goes where. So, it's very clear for any developer to know how their obligations, and this particular site being here, will be required to develop the standards of this Somerton Boulevard, and also the Wrecker Road, which is already in place. The last exhibit of the ordinance will show how the open space, big picture of the entire area is taking place, and how it's fitting within the overall concept. The connectivity, where the public areas are going to be located, the individual developments, how they're adding up to the big open space system. The next exhibit is part of the technical review that staff require before we go to the town council, to make sure that this particular development meets the development standards of the town. And they did provide us with all the information needed, even the site plan, the grading and drainage, the elevations, floor plans, landscaping improvement plans. We have reviewed that once, and the site plan and traffic analysis has been reviewed three times. The traffic impact study have been revised to meet the requirements of traffic engineering, and also the concerns that the commission brought last time. And talking about that, I would like to the, the Planning Commission had, in particular, a concern by reducing the side of the site, not because of the fact that it not only will leave a side that is not that regular in shape, but how this reduction in the acreage will affect the storage of vehicles, and will affect the internal circulation, and how it will connect the traffic and flow to the outside adjacent properties. We have this evening, Lency Hartman, Leslie Hartman, actually, she will be responding to any questions from traffic, and she'll be happy to answer those. In your report, staff identified the main issues, which were the commission asking how this project relates to the adjacent uses. In fact, this project is the first one that is taking place south of the Williamsville Road, north of railroad tracks, so whatever driveway accesses will, in the future, will have to line up with what the school presents now. So, there's no connectivity between the school and the adjacent bad, bad in properties, but the connection to the north will have to line up, or be at a certain distance acceptable to traffic. Also, the, the access west on Wrecker Road, although it's not the most exceptional or the optimal, but it meets the safety requirements of traffic, based on the revisions made to the traffic study, which reveals that it's necessary, that under this condition, the site, as proposed, will handle 60% of the load of traffic. So, it is necessary and important that the school adopts the alternate schedule, two times, two different times of starting and dismissing a school population, and directing the parents, or whoever drops and pick up the students, to the most appropriate and safe route by designation. How is that going to be accomplished? The school and the applicant have agreed to submit, every year before the school begins, a letter stating that they are still implementing that plan for the, to, the starting and release time at two different times. The other concern that traffic has, and the traffic representative can clarify that, is the exit of, on Wrecker Road, which will have to either go north, if some of the traffic would like to go south, they will have to do a U-turn, which is permitted, however, not too many vehicles will be able to do it due to the right-of-way width of the Wrecker Road. So, traffic is stating that a signal, a traffic signal, that will be required at this location, when it is warranted by the traffic generated by the school, and any other development in the future. What else do we have? The other exhibits show the landscaping improvements that have been reviewed and accepted by staff. We also have the elevations, which show the, hold on, this is too fast for me. These elevations pretty much follow the materials and the classical style that the Coolie Station have identified, the hardscape, and the sum of the features in the Coolie Station area. Very classical, it tells what it is, and we don't have any objections. The only comment that the planning had on the, on the technical review was extending the typical Coolie Station wall further along the railroads, to screen and provide that view of a finished product, longer than just on the, on the Wrecker Road frontage. As I said, the applicant, although waived the design review supplemental, has not, have not been short of providing us with all the information that we needed to finish and be comfortable with the technical review. Landscaping provisions, I guess staff has reviewed against the plans for the Coolie Station landscaping, and there's a couple of conditions in the report that will be part of the ordinance, to make sure that whatever additional minor things will be implemented per the plans that we have reviewed and okayed, prior to going to council. This is schematics of the grading and drainage plan, they don't have any issues with engineering, it satisfies the standards of the town, and that's the second part of the grading and drainage plan. So, with this, staff recommends to the Planning Commission that they go ahead and approve the general plan amendment, and they, or recommend the approval of the general plan amendment, and also do recommend the approval of the corresponding zoning case, based on the fact that we were able to complete the, all the technical review, the traffic issues have been addressed, and it will work, subject to the conditions stated, and that we have the assurance that we are moving with the project, that not assurance that we are moving with the project that not only meets the vision of the Coolie Station, but is safe and workable according to the town standards. If you have any other questions for staff, I'll be happy to answer. We also have traffic representative to answer any specific questions on circulation onsite and offsite.
Thank you, Maria. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Steiger?
Maria, I have a question for the traffic folks. In the report, it mentions that a traffic light would likely be required at, I believe it's called Somerton?
That's correct, under Wrecker Road intersection.
Okay. And so two-part question. First, is that something that is immediately required? And second, when it is required, would it be the applicant's, at the applicant's expense or at the town's expense?
I can, in my conversation with traffic and traffic rep, can confirm that it is needed, but not at this moment. Traffic engineer Eric Gooderian stated a week ago when our final conversations before putting the report together that he would like that in the future, but it's not warranted at this time. And the project is going to go ahead and start construction documents, I guess in a week or so. So we won't have the traffic signal right now, but eventually it will be there as soon as traffic determines that it's warranted. And secondly, the fees, the development fees take care of that. The town will be able to have the funding to install the signal as soon as they feel that it's warranted.
One final question. That's pretty close. That's not that far from the traffic light at Higgins Correction, Wrecker and Williamsfield. Has the, has the traffic department looked at any sort of synchronization with the signal that's just north of there?
I would like to defer that question to the traffic representative about timing and synchronization.
Leslie Hart from traffic engineering. And anytime the traffic signal is installed in the city, in the town of Gilbert, that is a standard operation that we do, that we place coordination where we think it's going to work best. So answer your question? Yes, we will do that at the time it's needed. Anything else?
Anything else for the traffic engineer? Commissioner Sippel?
I have a handful of them.
Okay.
Did you say wow?
For traffic?
Oh, I said oh, because you're probably going to ask.
Is it just for traffic?
Traffic, just traffic, yes. Do we know how many cars can stack before they hit the train tracks as well as the extremely close high school that's a little further south where there's another light right there too, Commissioner Staggered, right there to enter the parking lot of the high school as well?
The analysis concentrated on how many cars could be handled within the site itself without any impact to any of the adjoining streets. So when we're looking at the potential enrollment of 1,000 students, we think that the cars that serve at about, that would be associated with about 600 students can be handled at the site if they had one starting time. With staggered start times and approximately split, we feel that the 1,000 students can be held within the site.
So it's your belief that not a single car will flow out into the road?
Not going to say never, but it's our best, best calculations that there won't be impacts to the streets.
And when you were doing your analysis, did you take into consideration any other school locations that are operated by this operator?
You'll have to forgive me in that I've been here for about a month, so I'm not totally familiar with all those, all their other locations. But they did, we did take a look at the mechanism that they use to manage the driving activities of the parents on the site with designated pickup areas for designated families. And it was explained how that works and they find that it does work very well at their site.
Thank you. That's it for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Ehler?
Sorry for my, oh, comment. But I guess for staff, as a question, can we queue in the fire lane? Because they're using the fire lane part of their queuing. Can we, are we allowed to do that onsite?
Let me move to the specific site plan so we can
Yeah.
better understand the question that you're placing to. Let me see. Okay. So your question is if they can queue in the fire lane?
Yeah, because they're using that lane to feed into their areas, but then they're using that as a fire lane. It looks like the fire lane goes around the building, but it also is noted next to the, assuming there are two drop-offs and pickups. Looking, I get to zoom mine in a little better on mine, but it's feeding right through the fire lane. So is that, is that an acceptable use?
Fire has reviewed also and they released the project as being acceptable, subject to traffic review of the flow and timing.
Okay.
So we don't have pending issues from fire, but we can make sure before we go to town council that the temporary location of the cars where they're going to be stored is permissible according to the fire lanes' notation or illustration.
Yeah, because I don't have a dimension of the actual queuing
Okay.
side lane here on either site plan that was given to us. But it goes, looks like the queuing, and it runs right through the fire lane. It would sit in front of ADA parking. That's how they have the queuing laid out. So I would personally have problems if I'm trying to get to a parking spot and you can't tell me that you're not queuing and pausing in front of those ADA spots, which surprise would be acceptable because you would have cars sitting right in front of parking spots.
Right, yes. We'll make sure that that is confirmed.
Okay.
So far, we've reviewed as they approved and didn't have any pending issues.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could clarify briefly, the area that you see marked as fire lane in there is not part of the designated queuing area itself. That is more of the travel lane where somebody has picked up a child or dropped off and then can pull out into that and continue to move. So it's not queuing as such, but we will check back on that.
But wouldn't that length, which again, I don't have a dimension of, if you, is in the traffic study, how many cars come per cycle? Because you would have another cycle, there's no way you could stack a pickup of a class in that little, that little run. Yes, I see it as a movement of traffic, but I can't see how the moving lane, you wouldn't have cars sitting in that lane waiting to get into that other spot. If you're looking on the north side of the building, you have the drive, it goes around the parking and then it feeds into that lane. They're even showing a double lane where that would be. So I don't understand how that couldn't be a standing point for cars.
It's possible. We've got an exhibit in the study itself that maybe would be more clear and we'd be happy to share whether that with you and go through that.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions for staff? Commissioner Bianchi?
This may be for me over the traffic. Will traffic be restricted from turning south on Wrecker, if I can see that site plan correctly, during the pickup and drop-offs to aid that circulation? Is there a median there that prevents a left turn south on Wrecker?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
The discussions with the school representatives were that when they're designating which of the drop-off areas any particular family would use, it would be chosen with bearing in mind where their destinations are and serving those, those that want to go north could be used, assigned to either drop-off area. Those that need to go south have to be on the north side of the building.
So it's not an enforcement issue because there's a median there anyway?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Further comments or questions for staff? I guess I have one. What is the fencing material that's going, or proposed to be used along the railroad side of the property?
A portion of the wall will be the typical view fence masonry alternate that is the typical approval for the Coolie Station. And staff requested that instead of stopping right here, be extended at least to wrap around. The rest of it will be open with a chain link fence for the sports fields. And there is, so it will be an open fence for the sports field and the view masonry combined along the western frontage and up to this point and again on the eastern side of the property. And open again with a chain link fence all around the sports field. So for attenuation for noise will be very minimal.
Right.
It will be more aesthetics. I mean, we still have buildings throughout the town and houses that are next to the, and it's unavoidable. I mean, and
I'm not, I'm not necessarily concerned as much about the noise as I am the safety of these kids. That, I think, is one of the biggest concerns that I have. Kids will be kids. Kids will do stupid things. Kids, you're right next to the railroad, which coincidentally, they have opposed and expressed their concern about the safety of the kids that would go to the school adjacent to the railroad tracks. I know my sons, if I turn, you know, turn my head for five minutes, they've already climbed a chain link fence. And I just, I worry about this. It could be just my kids, but
No, it's not.
I worry about that. That's kind of one of my concerns. So any future or additional contact with the railroad?
Yes, I understand that, well, no contact, the applicant was informed of the letter. We asked, and the, what the railroad agency was explaining in the letter is that they were also concerned about safety and they were also felt that it was not the most appropriate site noise-wise. The applicant has acknowledged that and that may be the reason why they did not oppose that we asked for additional mason review wall for safety, noise perception and also aesthetics.
Noise perception.
Extending. So maybe the commission feels that it's necessary to even extend further all along the, this type of masonry view, which is wrought iron, I mean, totally embedded into the masonry wall. It's the typical view fence masonry approved for the entire Coolie Station.
But sometimes, I mean, kids can climb that too. It depends on the height of the masonry versus the height of the wrought iron. I mean,
Right. I mean, it's two feet and six feet.
Okay, then that's different, yeah. All right, thank you. Additional comments or questions for staff? All right. Thank you, Ms. Cottavie.
You're welcome.
Well, welcome the applicant up, please. If you could give your name and residence, city of residence, that'd be great.
Brian Huffaker with the Charter School Fund residing in Boise, Idaho. We're glad to be back in front of you today and certainly appreciate staff's involvement and their work over this last month to sit down numerous times with us to, to address the comments that were raised from the commission last month and to find solutions to those questions, generally regarding traffic and other, other types of issues. Maria has done a wonderful job to kind of give you the history and where, and the zoning that has happened in the past. We won't go over that again. But if I may, to try to address some of the questions that have already been raised tonight and then we can certainly stand for more questions that might come. Commissioner Oller, I believe, for, I think what you are saying, I agree with, that the area that's designated as a fire lane will be used for, in that queuing length that's identified to stack cars as they move through the parking lot prior to getting to the loading and unloading zone. That's how I understood your question and I would agree with you that that's, that's the case. That is a standard use of those drive aisles that we've done in many schools and the state fire marshal has been fine with those. But if that's something that the town fire department needs to, to review and sign off on, that's fine even further. Just to clarify, that access coming out on, the only access we have coming onto Wrecker from, directly from our project is a ride and ride-out. And so there is a median, there is a physical prohibition from making any southbound turns there. The only southbound turn will come off of the public street of Somerton Boulevard. As, as well, the only entrance onto the site through the loading and unloading activity also comes off of Somerton Boulevard. There is no entrance off of Wrecker Road for that activity. And so for any potential stacking out to Wrecker Road, would have to come back all the way through, through the site and the 700 or the 500 feet of Somerton. We feel that we have designed the site to hold all of the queuing onsite and not relying on those public rights of ways. But if there were to be a car stacked on the Wrecker, it would have to go that far. In comparison, Commissioner Sippel, I know that, I think you were the one that raised the Atholos Chandler site in our last meeting. In comparison to that school, Chandler has about 1,100 lineal feet of queuing and stacking area on their site. We have almost 1,700 lineal feet. They have about 400 feet of the loading area where cars can actually stop to drop off their kids. We have double that. We have 800 feet. That helps to be more efficient and get cars in and out much more quicker. Those are the physical aspects. What we are also agreeing to and committing to do differently at this school, as Maria has indicated, is a couple of things. One is the staggered start and end times. We have agreed to do our best to try to split that as close to 50/50 as we can when we're, when either Maria or Leslie mentioned the 60% number. We could go to about a 60/40 split and still maintain that stacking onsite for that, for that buffer. Enrollment changes every year. We, I can't stand here and guarantee that we're spot-on 50/50 every time, but we have about a 20% buffer there that if, if one start or end time got a little, little heavier, we still have the queuing onsite to hold, hold those cars. The school has agreed to the best allocation as they can for parents, whether they're needing to go to the north or needing to go to the south so that they can get off, get out on the, the best loading zone and exit that would get them heading in the direction that they need to go. And the other thing that, that we have specifically agreed to is through our traffic management procedures with the parents each year is to specifically identify and address the Wrecker Road movements to prohibit the U-turn movements on Wrecker Road. Those things were very clear from the traffic department as concerns and we are, we concur with those conditions as they've been stated. As far as the Union Pacific Railroad, I have reached out to Mr. Patrick McGill twice with no return phone call. So I have not had a chance to talk with him. He's not replied. We, we certainly understand the, their letter and their statement. And I think that there are statements that could be applied to any use that's against a railroad other than industrial use. If it's residential, which it is currently zoned, I think you still have the same issues of kids and pedestrians and vehicles. We have the high school that's on the south side that's against the tracks and granted, we, we hope that high school kids are a little more mature than elementary kids, but we still have a lot of this, of we still have a lot of the, of similar uses that are already there. We are in the airport overlay zone, so we, we are already having to construct the building to address the more noise attenuation in our building construction. So, I think that we've tried to address those things. We really don't feel that we're trying to place in a use in a very inappropriate location. When you have railroad tracks go through a town, you're going to have a lot of those issues to deal with. And, and we, we acknowledge that the railroad tracks there and, and we believe that what we're doing onsite will, will protect our kids and provide the best educational opportunity for them. I'm sure that there's more questions. I would be glad to take any more that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Huffaker. Are questions for the applicant? Commissioner Steiger?
I missed the last meeting, so I'd ask you to indulge me. What was the nature of the, of the hazard that Higley found out? And I don't know if they communicated to you, but they communicated to the town.
Yes, I believe what you're talking about is the environmental. Toxaphene is the insecticide that they had discovered, I think in '07 or '08 when they, when they had taken a look at it. The levels that they found on the, the southern half of the site exceeded what they list as the residential screening limits, which is also what's used when, when considering school sites. We, we have evaluated those reports. We've done our own reports to evaluate what we have to do with that. And in actuality, toxaphene is pretty common in this valley and we almost have to deal with it on every site that we come into an agricultural use. But as stated in their report and as stated by our consultant, there's really three things you can do. You can not do anything and then therefore not build a school and not build any residential uses. You can pick it up and move it off and dispose at a, at an approved landfill to just get rid of it. Or there's the potential of mixing in clean soil. I don't want to say aerating because that connotates something different, but mixing in clean soil, almost like a dilution, if you will. That has typically worked for us in the past. What we have agreed to and, and one of the conditions is that prior to the issuance of any building permits, that we would provide a, I can't remember the name, but basically we will have to go do our remediation and test it again to make sure that we've, that we come below those levels and provide that report to the city or to the town before they would issue any permits.
Thanks, sir.
Last question, is that because the chemicals were stored in that area?
No.
Because it doesn't, I think, I know, but we've got quite a few fields around here and I don't think that we've heard of this contamination being an issue in these areas, maybe around here. It just happens to be on this particular site.
Sure. It wasn't from a storage issue because it's kind of spread out probably over about seven acres. There are, there is that storage yard that's, that's there now. That did have a little bit of staining, which is about 20 cubic yards. Not a, not a threat to the environment. I mean, we have to take care of it, but it's not a significant amount. But this was an application of insecticides that was sprayed on, on the crops.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Elder, did you have something?
Yeah. Couple of questions. Going back to the meeting before and it was actually not, I don't know if, it was given to us, but back to the chunk that's not being used between that angle on a previous design that we had. I, I guess some of it, because looking at your landscape plan, you, you have the fire lane going to the other side, which basically takes out that entire landscape buffer that would be on that side. And I see that we have a 15-foot setback and I'm surprised that we don't have to carry landscape through that fire lane, because you can penetrate a landscape setback, but you can't drive through it or along it. But I guess going back to why, why are you not buying that other piece of property?
Well, there were a couple of issues. The, the Roosevelt lateral runs east-west right here. About somewhere in this location is a ditch that heads to the north and serves all of that property between that ditch and Recker Road. And at that time, this eastern boundary even extended further to the east and it was, you know, it was about 15 acres. It was much larger, so we significantly impacted that irrigation ditch going to the north. The Cooley family in, that operates the, their, their farming activities asked if there's any way that we could avoid impacting that ditch that goes to the north. That was one aspect. That's why we, we brought this corner back to, to here and this corner back to here on Somerton. The other aspects were that cost is certainly an issue in evaluating the cost of the land. We have about, we talked a little bit last time about the easements that are parallel to the railroad tracks, about 70 feet of, of area that we are needing to buy that we really can't use. Both, used to be an El Paso natural gas easement and then an additional 20-foot easement to the Roosevelt Water Conservation District as we pipe that lateral around the site. Those are uses of land that they wanted to have fenced off from the campus. And so we've lost that use. And so we just had some costs come in that we didn't originally expect from our first conversations with those utility companies. And one of the ways that we could help mitigate some of those costs was the reduction of the site. One of the reasons why it's in this configuration is it's always easier to, to develop a square or rectangle than it is if you can imagine drawing a, a line here that creates such a long triangular piece here for the next property that really becomes unusable for anything. This one, you could, you could develop some lots in here. You could use this as your retention area. You could use this as the common play area. We've, we have felt that it gives a lot more flexibility to the property owner to the east in whatever that might be. If this turns out to be something other than residential, it, it could be, you know, a, a building or it could be parking lot.
Well, wouldn't that be, I mean, you said there's irrigation going north. That way, wouldn't it be tough to develop that very costly if it's a much smaller property to, to develop that irrigation canal going that way? And since you can't really dilute that over your property, which would be much larger than...
Sure.
Wouldn't that be really tough to do? I agree with you on the, trying to straighten it out, doing it on an angle, creating pie shapes, not a, not the best idea. But I guess, because it goes back to, I guess, another question, is how do you define your 1,700 and your 800 queuing? And I ask that because the original design had the parking going over and your parking was larger. So, I, I guess, how do you define that if you're not queuing in, or how, how are you defining it?
My, my statements in regards to, to maintaining some flexibility for development here is certainly on the, the premise that this is part of this whole parcel and it would be developed in whole and not just as a single two-acre development. And so when this whole, whole parcel develops, the lateral is going to have to be taken care of. This north ditch is going to have to be taken care of. So there's, something's going to have to be done at that point when that happens. That, that's where my expectation was coming from. As far as the, the stacking, if, if this helps to, for me to show, the two stacking areas that we have, well, let me go back. The loading areas we have is one that's here in front of the school and the second one is here on the west side of the school. There you go.
Yeah.
So, we would have actually two lanes that come in off of Somerton and utilize a dual, two lanes, if you will. Once they turn here, one comes directly south to use the west access, one does the 180 and then uses this access here. That's the circulation pattern that we have. In meeting with the traffic department, they, we've talked about their concerns for this. This is actually an old figure. We asked that, or we did at their direction, we increased the width of this drive lane from 24 feet, which is the, the typical width of all the drive aisles, to 27 to give a little more maneuvering space in there for those cars. And we've also increased the radiuses here for these turns so that we can separate those two lanes as they turn, if you will, to, to just make it a little easier to make those turns.
So, the blue is where the actual stacking? Do you have students crossing?
The blue is, is the drop-off areas. The red would be the stacking, assuming that stacking being, I've got my child in the car and I'm waiting as I move up, right? The blue is where you would stop and drop off your car. I'm sorry, your, your student. We talked about the west side here.
Right.
You would be able to drop off as you come here. Some cars might pull off to the right lane and stop to let their kids off on this sidewalk. Others will pull off to the left and let kids off on this sidewalk. What we have always done is provided staff that would be on the opposite side of the drive aisle from the school building that would collect those kids. And what you don't see on here are sidewalks at either end that would escort those kids across that sidewalk.
Stopping traffic?
Yeah, but traffic doesn't go that fast. But yes, it would stop traffic and would cause that minor delay, yeah.
So, in answering question, the red line is your stacking, when you said 1,700 and 800, you were comparing to Athlos, because I, I went, I'm actually, one of my neighbor's kids go, which was nice to hear that, you know, talking through with them and how you guys had a lot of problems, I guess, in the very beginning and you guys are working through them, so I think you can work through them. But I'm worried about that you're trying to shoehorn this in a little bit. I don't think it's that tight, but it's getting tight and having stacking on either side starts, or stacking in fire lanes, which I know you have to do somewhat, but then you're reusing that fire lane to go through a landscape setback and going through the backfields, because I know you have to get to all the sides, but it just keeps creating more and more differences.
Well, the, the fire lanes around the building really has no connection to, to the queuing. That's, as you say, we have to have so much lineal distance to the building from a fire lane and, and that would be there regardless, either way.
But it's going through a landscape setback on the side that you cut off?
Sure.
So, okay.
You know, as, as far as, as the queuing and the drop-off, I, I guess what I'm trying to, to, to share as I throw out those numbers between the, the distances here and the distances in Chandler, is that we are providing double the, twice as much of the drop-off, the blue areas, as Chandler does, and 50% more of the overall stacking areas of the red that we're showing here. That's the physical differences. The operational differences is that Chandler is still running at a, basically a single start time. And so they're running all thousand, about 960 as you take, take the half-day kindergarten, so 960 kids at one time. We're taking as much as we can, half of that. So, half the number of vehicles that you would see at Chandler, but 50% more queuing than what we provide at Chandler.
But real quick, the last question is defining that red line. Just so I know, where do you define that? Is that entire red line? Is where you get your queuing number?
Like I said, I think this is an older one, but I, I do believe that the entire red line is counted in that 1,600 lineal feet that we talked about.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, she may have an answer to that.
The queuing calculation would include each of the blue areas and then the red line from the entrance to where that blue starts. So you got, we've got two red lines basically this far, plus blue, blue, and blue.
That's queuing or stacking?
It's kind of all one number.
Okay, well, he gave me two numbers.
I gave you, okay.
Not you, the applicant.
Right. And you can, these would be, these would be our drop-off areas.
Right.
And then, and this would be the, which count within our queuing, stacking, they're a lot the same. And plus these two reds for the remainder of available space for vehicles to wait onsite.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for staff or for the applicant? Commissioner Bianchi?
I guess the one question I would have, so we're talking about circulation, we're talking about queuing, we're talking about staggered start times. If this becomes an issue and even, even though we've tried to mitigate this, what recourse would we have with the, as the town to work with you to correct these situations once the school's built and we're at capacity or wherever we are? What, would, would you, would you then work with the town to approach this or would the town have any recourse to, to alleviate these traffic concerns? Well, I could certainly answer what we can control in being willing to work with you. I, I don't like the legal term of recourse. I don't know if the city, town does or not. But we have. We have in the past worked with, with cities and towns to, to make sure that that works and we would be willing to do that. And I'm not, I'm not sure if staff would like to reply to that as well. Or the traffic. I'm sorry, Maria.
Any further questions?
Chairman, Madam Chair and Commissioner Bianchi, I understand that by the condition staff included required by traffic, the applicant have committed to every year to first thing, don't even think about just one starting time. It will be that in writing, they commit to provide the staggering time for admission and dismissal. That is one thing. The other attenuation for making the Recker Road traffic flow better will be the installation of the signal and a future time as warranted. And I, in, those are the two measures that will be in place. I, I, I am convinced that the traffic have taken such a precaution to keep, I mean, it will be maintenance, but it will be a, a communication over time every year if any additional issues come up or maybe they function well, but be in, in, in contact with the, the applicant and the managers of the facility for every year review of whatever issues arise onsite.
Can I, can I?
Commissioner Sipple?
Just to stay on that point, I think the question is, I understand that those things are in place and I think Commissioner Bianchi understands that those things are in place as well. So what happens if they don't? What happens if they don't do two start times? They say they're going to. What happens if they don't? And what happens if those things that you've asked them to do, they don't do? What really is our recourse? We walk in and say, you need to do it? And then they say, okay, and we leave and then they don't do it? I mean, that's kind of where I'm getting stuck at. And I'm going to use an example. I'm in the business of education. We have this same thing. We have to present something to the staff actually twice a year and it's a letter that we sign and we send. We say we're doing it. We're doing it, but staff doesn't come out. And if we didn't do it, there's no recourse. We just say we're going to. And so I think it's making sure that we really look through the site and how many cars it can hold. I mean, we're making a, a big decision here for a large school next to train tracks.
And I think there's a stipulation also that requires them to do that every year. And so I think that if they violate that stipulation, that we, the town does have a little bit of legal recourse, which fellows can talk about. Councilman Smiley, Councilor Smiley?
Thank you, Chairman Whitman, Commissioner Sipple. The, if it's in the zoning ordinance as a condition of the zoning, then the enforcement would come through the zoning code provisions on enforcement. It would be enforced by the, the code compliance officers and there are penalties set forth in the zoning code that would be applicable. So, you know, the town does have enforcement capability of its zoning code and of conditions of zoning ordinances.
We must just follow it so well that we never had that issue. Good, okay.
Further comments or questions for the applicant? Further comments or questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. Is there anybody here wishing to speak on this matter? There's only one other person here and I think they're with the applicant. I don't have any cards. Staff, do you have any, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think we tried since the last time until now to address all the issues that the commission had because we also were, wanted to make sure that we're taking to council something that is doable, effective, efficient, and safe.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for discussion and possible motions.
May I start?
Yes, Commissioner Sipple.
This is where I can go through all the other stuff?
Go through everything, all your thoughts.
All right. So my thoughts are, in our previous meeting, the applicant had mentioned that charter schools typically don't do site-built. They go, most charter schools go into places and they remodel and they kind of fit it into what they've got to exist. But in this position, they're able to ground build something, which is fantastic. And I think it's great for charter schools to do that. However, I feel like we're just trying to make this school fit in this piece of property. Even if they were a block north and at the northern corner of Recker, most of these issues would go away. We wouldn't have, well, we wouldn't have most of these issues. So I'm really concerned about the safety issues. We brought them up not only for traffic flow, but for playgrounds and fencing next to railroads. And yes, the district does have schools that sit by the train tracks. However, Higley High School, the district office and a maintenance yard sit prior to the high school, prior to the train track. So there's a maintenance and district office that separates it. And then Williams Field has the bus barn that separates it. So we don't have a situation where a school is directly aligning with a train track for traffic in and out. I think even Higley Elementary, it aligns next to the railroad, but it doesn't, the traffic doesn't affect there. So we've got a real traffic issue. And not only do we have a real traffic issue, but I believe, and I'm going to be really blunt, that this applicant has a real traffic issue. Yes, we spoke about Athlos and they do have a serious traffic issue with the same-sized school. I went out to visit the site about two weeks ago, the week before Christmas break, or the Christmas break, and it, cars had backed up from that site all the way to Queen Creek Road and a major intersection. So from Gilbert, where they said Gilbert and Queen Creek, cars were backed up to get into that property to the north of it there. And it took over an hour to dismiss the kids. Now granted, there's a one-time dismissal on that property, which the applicant has mentioned, and they want to do something different here. So there is a traffic concern there. They have another location that I sought out in Queen Creek, Ironwood Crossing, which is in a subdivision. So it's a much more non-major arterial road traffic. It's more of a community. And in that area, it took 40 minutes to dismiss the school. And I don't know if they do staggered dismissal times or not. So here's multiple projects where it takes an extended amount of time to dismiss children from the campus. So to me, the history shows that they have issues trying to control traffic flow. And these properties don't sit next to a train track or adjacent to a major high school that has high school traffic. It seems to me that you mentioned that they can handle 60% of the total traffic at any one time, the property can. Why would, I would propose that you do 600 kids then, not 1,000. And then finally, I too had met with some parents of Athlos and they did say it has gotten better. But on the onset of this specific year, I mean, they had teachers that were leaving with heat exhaustion. I mean, it was, I mean, they don't, people avoid that area where this school is at, turning, pick-up, and drop-off because it is so bad. So I'm glad to see we have things in place that we could penalize if it was continuing to be an issue. I would say if we recommend a motion to move forward and approve this, that the traffic light be installed immediately. I know parents, they're going to U-turn anyways. They're just, they're going to do it. So the time is now to put it in, especially, I would assume that, I don't know what the ramp-up plan is for the school, but even if you have 500 kids in the school next year, parents are still going to do U-turns. I just really, for me and past history and just a feel on the property in general and the project in general, I wish it was not right here. It could just literally be a block north. And to me, I'd feel much more comfortable. So as it sits now, I commend the staff with all the hard work that they've done, but I just would not be in support of this for multiple reasons.
Thank you. Any further comments? Vice Chairman?
To talk to the whole traffic issue, for the newer commissioners that haven't heard me say, for the 4,000th time, I live across the street from Gilbert High School and I have since 1996. And when you want to talk about traffic issues on, man, on Elliott Road, it is a mess morning and night. And finally, this last school year, Gilbert High did a redesign and it's smooth. It's beautiful. But finally, here we are in 2012. So it's been a long time coming. It takes time. I think we saw that with the last design of the charter school that we saw just last month and the month before that. Traffic, parking, stacking is always going to be an issue at a school, no matter where we put it, no matter who runs it, it's always going to be an issue. Parents are not going to follow the rules. They never do. I've never seen people not turn left out of Gilbert High School's driveway between the hours that they're not supposed to turn left onto Elliott Road. They always do it. They always have. And even with the redesign, they still do. I think that the location for the school may be not ideal under the circumstances because it's a K through six, I think, elementary school with being so close to the railroad tracks, but the mitigating fence. And I'm sure that the teachers and staff are going to keep a really good eye on those kids, even though I know kids can be kids and crawl through dog doors and such. But it will also be a buffer for whatever goes north of this, probably residential will go north of this, so, or northeast of this, I guess. It's kind of an odd shape. So I would have to say that being the location, maybe not the most perfect situation and they are going to be disturbed during the day from the train. I live over a mile from the train and I hear it pretty much day and night. And I've been inside, say, Target when the train goes by and it's pretty loud, right over here at Warner and Valvista. The kids will get used to that and they'll have six, seven years to get used to that from kindergarten through sixth grade. They'll have time to get used to that. So I think they'll all adjust in time and the school, obviously in construction, can do a little bit of mitigating and it'll get better. And I think the traffic and the parking and the driving will get better. A thousand kids is a lot of people. It's a lot of cars. But it's probably two to three kids per car, neighbors driving other kids. So it could even be, you know, four or five kids per car. So maybe even less cars than we anticipated. So I would have to say, for those reasons, I think I can go ahead and support this case tonight and we'll be doing so. And I hope that helps with some discussion. Or not.
Commissioner Eller?
Okay. Well, I can appreciate that, the sense you live right next to school. And my office is right next to the School of Arts in downtown Phoenix. So I see, they did not meet anywhere near what this design looks like. And they're queuing off into McDowell Road now and that's downtown Phoenix and they're going to have some major issues. But they're queuing right on two major streets, on Third Street and McDowell. And I don't even know how that works, but I get to see it now too. So I get to live your dream. So, at least only nine to five. In looking at the queuing, I guess, you know, my concerns are, I think the first design had it. I mean, I think you had it right and I do get costs. I completely understand that. I do get design issues and having to deal with fire lanes. And I still have a concern that we're using the full fire lane as a queuing lane or stacking or whatever you want to use, your terminology. There'll be cars sitting in the fire lane. Can they move? Yes. I mean, if there's a fire, they're going to move. But it's delay. And that's not just for fire, that's for ambulances and, you know, you could burn off a minute or two just on site. I still have some issues with the actual queuing because if you look into the northern corner, you got a drive that's coming from east to west and it kind of goes right back into the queuing. And I think that it, I mean, if you could enlarge that back to the original design, I'd be a lot more simpler because you're pinching that off where you didn't have to and you've got students crossing lanes on the western side. And I understand you can control it through teachers. But I like, I like in design, things to be mechanically driven, not human-based driven because humans make errors, just like I do and I think everybody in the world does. I'm still, with those issues, a little wishy-washy on it, but I don't think with this design that I can, I can support it. I think if you could just squeeze it out a little bit, if you could make, make it, I mean, the last charter school that we saw, I mean, I think they went overboard, which was awesome. I thought it was great. I mean, they just did major queuing after multiple renditions that we came back for. And so I don't know, on this design, I wouldn't be supportive, but I would be supportive of the use. I'd be supportive. I'm not so concerned because we have Recker, I would want the traffic light right away, but we have a median there so you can't turn south, but you will U-turn on Recker. So I'm not that concerned with the site overall. Kids will get used to the train. I lived in a house that was in Tempe, right next to railroad tracks. I got used to it. I mean, I'm not so worried about that. It's, my issue is, I think we're really squeezing this stacking, even though the numbers that were given, I'm not sure, I don't see how they add up to the numbers, but those are my issues with this right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments?
Can I?
Oh, staff?
Commissioners, I just wanted to point out that typically this conversation occurs at design review. And as a commission, we're asking you to look at the question of general plan and the rezoning, which is, is it appropriate for this general plan and zoning for the school, the PFI? Not so much the details of a traffic coordination plan. Because the condition that will be in the zoning ordinance does not adopt that graphic that you saw with the blue and the red lines. What it does do is require in zoning that the facility submit twice or once a year the plan, which notes the dispersion of time and pickup or safety of the parents. That's it. So if over time, there's a better way to do it, it can be done. There's nothing stopping this school from expanding and growing. They could buy more land and continue to grow. So with that, there'll be another opportunity with every new development to reassess and continue to make it better. So we're asking you to make a land use decision, not a traffic analysis decision. I'm just pointing that out because typically this conversation would have never been brought to you. It would be at the design review. The only reason why it's being discussed is because it's in the gateway area. It's a PAD, which typically requires a site plan to show some layout. Not always. Not always. So just be careful in some of your thoughts on how much you can support or not support with the decision on the dais, which is land use.
But I think too, some of the commissioners are looking at are, it is a PAD and it is a school, so it's a different type of use. And so with that, we have to look at the particulars of it. Does it work? Does it work with, is it safe? I think that's one of our factors for zoning in a case too, that we need to look at. And so I struggle with that too because I feel like it may not be typical for traditional zoning-type cases, but this is a PAD. They're asking for deviations and there's a request for this. And so we have to review it on that basis. And so I think that being concerned about traffic and circulation and the safety of those kids and the movement, I think, is part of our decision. It's not design-related, but I think overall safety in the general concept is something that we should look at.
Right. And if I might add, I think that the point that Linda was making was that the particular plan that you saw up there is not one of the conditions and it's not part of the development plan that you will be recommending as part of the rezoning ordinance.
So a stipulation, A, the zoning and development exhibit, which exhibit is that, that it's stipulating to?
That is the development plan.
That's the one that's up there now. That is the development plan. That is the zoning exhibit that will be attached to the ordinance. And we do realize that it does show in a tiny miniature form, a site plan that's associated with the school. That is what is being approved. All of the other discussion regarding the, all of the queuing and all the safety issues, of course, is excellent discussion, but that part of the discussion is not being approved in general plan and zoning.
I think, I think it also includes the open space and circulation plan.
Street sections.
Street section key sheet. Let's see.
Because I think by virtue of it being a PAD, it opens up additional level of scrutiny for the use and the deviations.
Well, and aren't we deciding with the size of the lot? I mean, I mean, that's part of our ideology of what we're dealing with. If, so we could say if it was only an acre and we did full lot coverage, I mean, then it's all right because it's not part of, I'm going to in a full extreme, but I'm just saying we have to look at it per the size of what we're rezoning to. I mean, are we dealing with 10 acres, 20 acres, 1,000 acres? So we kind of have to look at.
But part of the, part of the issue is that there are other processes that the development will have to go through, including design review and, right, but all the safety issues. So traffic will have a final approval. Fire will have a final approval. Building will have a final approval. And that's where your traffic plan will be locked in.
Didn't the applicant choose not to go through DR?
You are correct. It's a charter school, which is a public, doesn't require a design review, but they have gone through a courtesy review and they're also going through what they're going through with you now, which is all the traffic engineering and circulation. So I think all the conversation that we're hearing is very worthy discussion. I'm just providing a note of caution that if you feel the project is, you cannot support, I'm just cautioning that it should be on a land use issue, not a traffic circulation plan.
Perfect. Thank you.
Chairwoman. So will this come back to us anymore after this?
Not if the recommendation is made and it's not continued. Correct.
There might be an opportunity to fine-tune a condition of zoning that addresses a concern if you feel that it's not good enough.
Okay. Commissioner Eller, did you want to finish?
I had another question. So I guess, in fine-tuning my decision, so there's going to be a full nother look at it traffic-wise, planning, I mean, staff gets a full nother look at it. I know we're only dealing with the planning side of it, but there hasn't been an actual agreement on the parking. There hasn't been an actual agreement, I mean, parking, queuing and stacking.
Chairman Whitman and Commissioner Eller, the, a, traffic has approved the TIS, the Traffic Impact Study, with the requirement that they submit the letter and they commit on a yearly basis to have the double entrance and dismissal. That is an element of assurance that it's going to work according to the findings of the Traffic Impact Study. As the traffic set and the summary of staff evaluation says, As the traffic said, and the summary of staff evaluation says, it's not the optimal site, but is workable and is safe, according to the traffic. We'll see it again when the construction documents come, to make sure that they have not changed, and that they, queuing, and the length, and the parking, and the storage of vehicles conforms to what the Traffic Study latest findings state, that it's going to operate like that. Fire has okayed the plans, they will see it again in more detail with construction documents, planning won't see it. Like Linda stated, we do not do this level of technical review at zoning, but we knew that this applicant did not go, was not going to go to the sound review board, and we wanted to make sure that the details were paid attention to, and all the development services staff was going to okay the project. It could be better, certainly, but it is approvable and acceptable to staff.
What was the process that staff went through? What was the level, what was term, what, what process went through in the plan review, since we didn't go through a design review?
Exactly the same as it would, it would have gone to the sound review board. We've reviewed site plan, traffic, grading and drainage, landscaping plans, elevations. The only thing that we're not doing is writing a report, or presenting to the sound review board, and scheduling for a public meeting. From here, we'll go to council, with the conditions stated here, plus the standard language of an ordinance, and after that, they can go to plan review for construction documents, approval, and issuance of a building permit, and a couple of conditions here will have to be met prior to obtention or issuance of that permit.
And so it went through administrative plan review, and design review?
Correct, correct. If we want to call it that way, yes.
Well, I'm just trying to understand of how much of this plan has been vetted. I mean, like, I'm just taking a quick second look at it, and I know staff is 100% capable of dealing with and going, taking the design. I just want to know what level, since I'm, we're kind of looking at this as a zoning and issue, and I'm just looking at it if, as a property size. So I just want to know how that went through. So, so if it went through, we have, through CDs, we have another?
Layer of review. But we were presented with full-size plans of landscaping GDs, 24 by 36s, with red lines that went back to the applicant, and resumé a lot of plans, and you're looking at the smaller version of it, but we have full-size plans that have been reviewed and approved, okayed by the different divisions in development services.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Okay, well, are you ready?
Yeah, I just, I mean, as far as discussion, I think, I think we bring up, the commissioners give, like, good things to think about, especially with one Commissioner Ayler in the field, and Commissioner Sipple using it, I should say, in the education field, dealing with these kind of issues. However, I look at the railroad tracks, I mean, the field's buffer it, and I'm hesitant to load this area up. I think Vice Chairman Peterson said, we load this up with residential right next to it, so I think this is appropriate buffer use. I mean, we look at it, it is conditioned. I had originally had the original, the same thoughts about this isn't going through design review, and is that really typical for a project of this scope? But it's staff-reviewed, and I have, me personally, have to rely on the, the traffic engineers. And honestly, this is a major investment by the applicant, so I'm not sure where they'd try to fit a square peg in a round hole here. So in that regards, in regards to the use itself, I'd be for it.
Thank you.
I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll just keep it quick. I concur with Commissioner Bianchi.
Commissioner Steiger?
Yeah, I like some words that Commissioner Bianchi said, that feels like a square peg. It doesn't feel like a square peg in a round hole to him, but it does to me. Is it good for Gilbert in this location? Well, as staff has said, it's not optimal. It just doesn't pass the, it's good for Gilbert in this location test for me.
Thank you. Would you like me to come up first, or are you ready?
No, go ahead, I kind of said my piece.
Okay.
Chairman, I think you have a deciding vote on this.
I have some real concerns about this particular property at this location, and this use at this location. There are three main issues, I think, that I see with this property. The soil conditions, the noise levels, the security and safety of this facility. You've got the railroad saying no, you have, it located adjacent, right adjacent to a railroad facility, right adjacent to an Arterio Street, and then Minor Collector Street as well. And I, I do feel like you're cramming a square peg in a round hole, and I think that it, that, are we putting, are we taking the opportunity to build a school site that can promote a good educational system for our kids? Are we doing that? Is it safe? Is it, and these, I think I might feel differently if this was a high school site. They're a little bit older, they can make their own choices. I think when you have little kids, you're, they're still trying to teach them how to make good decisions, how to make good choices, and, and kids are going to be kids. And I just, and you can't be around them 100% of the time, and I feel that having this located this close to the railroad, and having the noise, I live probably half-mile, three-quarters of a mile north of the railroad as it exists today, and it's pretty stinking loud, especially when it comes to an intersection, and they're blaring their horns to sound, and I can only imagine that as they get close to this wrecker intersection, they're going to be doing the same thing while school is occurring, and while school is taking place. And I just, I have a real issue with that, that's going to distract the kids, and then not only that, I mean, you've got the circulation, you've got the, the kids either riding their bikes to school, or walking home from school, and crossing these railroad tracks, and crossing the wrecker road street. I mean, there's no homes right now on the east side of this road. Everything is located on the west and the north. And so either they're going to be all driven here, or some of them may be walking or riding their bikes, if they live close enough, and it hits a real concern to me. I think that, I think the three things that I look at the most, is it safe? Is it easy to access? And, you know, you've got the soil contamination on top of that. I know that they would have to remediate that in order to make it work, but I just don't see a good solution and resolution in my mind, and I don't see this as a safe site that I would want to send my own kids to, if we're picking school sites. I think that there's probably a much better location for this use in Gilbert, and so my vote will be no.
Chairwoman?
Yes.
Could I just add something?
Certainly.
You had mentioned the train, and I actually contacted the Pacific Railroad, and a train is on that track between 8:00 and 9:00, and between 11:30 and noon. Okay, when do we drop kids off? Between 8:00 and 9:00. And when do you pick up half-day kinders? Between 11:30 and noon. So, and I only say that because during two of...
The busiest times.
The busiest times of the three in the day, the possibility of a train going through that track is high, it's a high, high probability. So again, it adds to the safety concern of the amount of cars sitting on or around that track during a use time for the train.
Thank you. With that, do we have a motion?
No, I'm not, I'm not.
What?
Commissioner Steiger?
Got to work my iPad here. Back into that page.
Remember, we have a general plan and a zoning.
I move to recommend to the Town Council approval of GP 1207, a minor general plan amendment, and for the reasons set forth in the staff report, move to recommend approval to the Town Council for Z 12-20.
Do you want to approve that, or do you want to deny it?
I'm happy, no, I actually consciously said approve it, knowing that if we all voted against it, so I'm comfortable.
Then it will fail. The vote will fail. And then we'll have to revote. Yeah.
One for the general plan, and one for the zoning.
Very good.
That's, yeah.
Okay, go, go for it.
With your guidance.
Sure.
Do it either way.
So I think with this...
Remove to deny.
In a way that you feel the case should be. That's what my, my recommendation should be.
It works out.
It does, but...
I move to recommend to the, to the Town Council disapproval of GP 12-07, a minor general plan amendment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposing?
Nay.
We have three opposing, Peterson, Fuller, and Bianchi.
For the reasons set forth in the staff correction, I move to recommend disapproval to the Town Council for Z 12-20. That's it.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Steiger, second by Commissioner Sipple. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Three dissenting votes are Peterson, Fuller, and Bianchi. Motion, or the case fails. Will this case also go to the Town Council in two weeks? Probably.
I believe it does.
You think it is?
I believe it does, yeah. This goes to the Town Council in two weeks.
The 17th.
Seventeenth.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to administrative items. Item number 11 minutes, consider approval of the minutes of the study session regular meeting of December 5, 2012. Commissioner Bianchi?
I don't know, anybody have any changes?
I didn't see any.
No.
The only, I thought Margot did an excellent job, because there were a lot of handouts and everything she had to include. The two changes I had is, on the opening page, it should say Commissioner Sipple, because it just says Christopher Sipple. And then I noticed in at least one area, it called, referred to you as Commissioner Stipple. Yeah, so we need to correct that.
We'll get it, we'll get it right. Yeah, we'll get a few months leeway.
Stipple is a word, though, isn't it? So it probably, in spell check, wouldn't pick up.
It might have.
But with that, I would move to approve with those corrections.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
I abstain as well, I wasn't here.
Okay, who abstains? Fuller and Steiger. So to prove, five to two.
Five to zero.
Five to zero to two. Right, sorry. Moving on to communications, a report from chairman and members of the commission on current events. Happy New Year, everybody, and Commissioner Peterson, or Vice Chairman Peterson.
I just have one thing that...
Your mic.
I just have one thing on behalf of the Planning Commission. I will be at the newcomers' welcome social on Saturday, January 19, from 9:30 to 11:30 at the Southeast Valley Regional Library.
Great.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to recognize and acknowledge Vice Mayor John Sens, who is our council liaison for his service and his dedication to not only this commission, but the town as well.
Absolutely, we're gonna, we're gonna miss him. All right, and our council liaison is not here this evening. Report from the Planning Services Manager on current events.
Happy New Year, everyone, and welcome, Kyle, to the commission.
I appreciate you being here, thank you very much.
Linda?
Yes.
Do you have any idea how the whole council liaison will, will work? Will we get the new council member Taylor in John Sens's place, or any ideas?
Typically, they discuss that at their August retreat, and they try to pick and choose at least two or three commissions that they work on, so it won't be an automatic replacement.
Okay, so we may go from now until August without a council liaison?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
I don't think we've ever been without a council liaison.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'll let you know.
That wouldn't be good, right?
Yeah, you need one.
Okay, thank you. Happy New Year.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. Move to adjourn?
Adjourned. I just thought, you would have made that motion and not voted for your own motion?
I know. And it would fail.
But it would, it would still work. It would just be like, are you making...